help us examine areas where we may be able to reduce spending without compromising the quality of education we provide to our students. At the heart of this process are no cuts, but questions, honest, data-driven, and responsible questions about how we can use our resources more effectively and ensure that every decision supports student success. For example, staffing structure at the high school. A full-time teacher typically teaches seven classes per day, averaging twenty-four students per class, reaching roughly one hundred and sixty-eight students each day. In some departments, however, we're seeing scheduling where teachers are carrying fewer classes, sometimes three to four a day. For example, if a retirement occurs and a certification aligns, it might be possible for remaining teachers to absorb classes without increasing student-to-teacher ratios or losing programs. This kind of analysis is healthy and necessary. It's about being good stewards of taxpayer dollars while ensuring our classrooms and our students get what they need. We've also heard directly from teachers across departments over the past eighteen months, one consistent message has emerged: We want more time with students. We wholeheartedly agree. Tasks like study halls and hallway supervision, while important, can be reassigned, freeing up our educators to focus on instruction. Our teachers didn't pursue education to monitor halls, they pursued it to teach, and we want to support them in doing just that. I also want to address questions around our music program, a program we deeply value. We love our music program, we love all of our programs. However, we've heard concerns from teachers and families about students being pulled from core academic subjects to participate in music. So we're asking, is there a way to continue the growth of music while minimizing its impact on academics? These are not conversations about elimination, but about enhancement and balance. A similar evaluation is happening with physical education. At the high school, we've seen more than fourteen-hundred PE class requirements for fewer than twelve-hundred students, clear evidence that students value and need physical education as a part of their day. PE and athletics play a vital role in promoting student health, focus, and well-being, and we support these programs. This review isn't about cutting opportunities, it's about making sure our scheduling structure truly supports every student's access to meaningful physical activity. Clubs and extracurriculars, including rocketry and other many valued programs, are also under review. The board's focus here is equity and consistency, not cuts. We're looking at whether similar programs are receiving similar support and how we can make sure all students have access to meaningful, fairly-resourced experiences. Outside the classroom, we've also been evaluating areas like transportation facilities and long-term infrastructure. These may not feel as directly tied to education, but they are essential to maintaining a safe, efficient, and future-ready district. Projects like a proposed maintenance building and road improvements have been discussed for more than a decade. In many cases, these updates could ultimately reduce long-term cost and liability while improving safety and operational effectiveness. As the YMCA preps to start renovations, we need to find a home for our now homeless maintenance department to remain effective on campus. The funding for these projects are sourced from construction projects only. Through all of this, we want to thank our administration. They have worked closely with us, responding to difficult questions with professionalism, collaboration, and care. We are nine volunteer board members that bring nine very unique perspectives, but we are united in one mission: To make Spring Grove the best it can be for all students, staff, and our community. Finally, we want to be very clear: Every question we ask is rooted in care. We serve in this role because we believe in our district's potential. These conversations are not always easy, but progress rarely is. Thank you for your continued trust and engagement as we move forward together. Joe, anything from you before we move into public comment?
Thank you, President Morbong. I will try to follow that up, that was a great statement, thank you. Good evening, members of the board, members of the Spring Grove community. Before addressing the specific concerns regarding our PE and music departments, I want to acknowledge the significant volume of public comment, emails, calls, and conversations we have received regarding staffing in our physical education and our music departments. Your presence here tonight further underscores the importance of these programs to our community, and I sincerely appreciate you taking the time to engage with the board and administration on this topic. When you take time to write an email, when you take time to pick up the phone and call us, it means a lot. We were able to get that input from you, and we appreciate it. Recently, I had the opportunity to be a guest on a podcast about our district. I was asked a question I reflect on and have reflected on for about the past nine months: What makes Spring Grove special? My answer then, as it is now, was unequivocal: It's the people. It's you. It's the people packing this room. It's the students, the families, the staff, and the wider community. You are what makes Spring Grove truly special: Your dedication, your involvement, your support, that's the heart of our district. The school board and the district administration have responsibility, and we take very seriously, to be good stewards of all of our resources. We must always look for ways to improve our fiscal management; that's not new for us, we've always tried to operate efficiently. This budget season has pushed us to look even deeper by conducting district-wide reviews of operations that include transportation, maintenance, and staffing. As we're aware, we have a physical education teacher retiring at the end of this year, and a music instructor who has resigned. In this case, we are not eliminating core programs, we are thoughtfully responding to retirement and resignation. After careful consideration of our district's resources and programming needs, the administration's current work and draft plans involve reallocating responsibilities among our existing dedicated and highly qualified staff to cover these vacancies rather than hiring new replacements at this time. This approach through attrition does allow the district to realize some necessary savings as we manage our resources responsibly. We also understand that reallocating duties internally may have impacts. It could result in slightly larger classes in some specific PE or music elective sections compared to current levels. And, as we are all aware, the district and our taxpayers have afforded us the opportunities to have slightly larger classes because of our unbelievable facilities. The facilities allow us to have the opportunities we have. We are committed to managing these changes thoughtfully to minimize disruption and maintain the quality of instruction our students deserve. We seek the stakeholders involved in the music department and the physical education department to help us navigate that difficult path forward. Tonight, seeing this room filled with passionate individuals, having received such a wealth of feedback over the past few weeks, is a powerful and tangible reflection of that very truth about our community. It demonstrates how deeply this community cares about our schools, our programs, and most importantly, our students' experiences. Your engagement, your willingness to voice your perspectives, that is a hallmark of how special the people of Spring Grove are. Speaking personally, I know the positive impact programs like music can have on a student's life. Being active in the musical and concert choir was a meaningful part of my own educational experience, and I understand the importance in helping students grow in confidence, creativity, and connection. I carry that perspective with me every day to work when I come here. So while we navigate challenging decisions regarding resources, please know that your input is heard and genuinely valued. Thank you for your passion, thank you for your advocacy. Speaking of advocacy, when I look at this group, we have an opportunity here. If we could channel this energy towards cyber school reform to the tune of eight-thousand dollars for a set fee for cyber school education. Right now, five-hundred different tuitions are charged through our Commonwealth to attend a cyber charter school. Every school district sets a different amount. Ours for a general education student is over sixteen-thousand dollars. So any cyber education student that chooses, by school choice, by family choice, for whatever reason, to leave our district, takes sixteen-thousand dollars with them. There is a proposal right now in the House of Representatives and in the Senate on a state level for an eight-thousand dollars funded, flat-funded across the Commonwealth for all districts to pay the same amount. That would attune to about one-point-five million dollars in savings to the district. We would keep one-point-five million dollars here in Spring Grove that we can use for a variety of things. If we take this energy and channel it towards that reform, we may be able to solicit that change in the funding formula. In the next few days, you'll see our website will go live with information on how you, as a citizen, as a parent, as a taxpayer, can advocate for that change. Please keep an eye out for our website for that information about cyber school reform. I thank you, and thank you for coming out tonight.
All right, so we are going to move into formal addresses to the board. Just a few things, some housekeeping items that I need to read through. The board recognizes the value to school governance of public comment and the importance of involving members of the public who are school district residents or current district employees in board meetings. Members of the public who are school district residents, own property within the school district, or are current district employees will be recognized and invited to speak on any matter concerning the operation of our school district. A maximum five minutes will be granted per individual. Mr. Zap will remind you once you're getting close to time. If we go beyond the maximum allotted time by board policy, which is thirty minutes, the board may pause and consider extending the allotted time, which will require a majority vote. This is an opportunity for public comment, it is not open dialogue, it is not an opportunity to engage in a back-to-back, back-and-forth conversation, this is a meeting open to the public and is not a public meeting. Board members will offer a response after all public comment is heard. Several individuals have been listed on the agenda and will be given first opportunity to speak. Prior to your comment, please state your name, your municipality, or group affiliation, if appropriate. All statements shall be directed to the board, no participant may address or question board members individually. Each person speaking will be informed when they have one minute remaining. Right, the first person is Jenna Hope.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jenna Hope, I live in North Cudores Township. I am a district employee, and I graduated from Spring Grove in two thousand and twenty-one. First, I would like to thank you all for your hard work and dedication to this school district, because as I understand, the school board puts a lot of thought into their decisions. With that being said, your decisions impact every single student and employee in the district, as well as community members. I would like to make my position and my purpose clear, that I do not think it is advisable that you decide to downsize our music department. Personally, I started learning an instrument in the third grade, and I have been playing the clarinet for thirteen years now, and I feel very dedicated to our music department. My dedication is a result of teachers who had the time and motivation to dedicate to my technique and musicality playing the clarinet. While in high school, I had the opportunity to audition and attend our district bands. I did marching band for five years, I was a part of the symphonic band, the jazz band, the stage band, I did musical, I continue to do our musical as I'm in college and as I be an active community member. Throughout my four years of college, I have also dedicated my time to our marching band. I have been an employee of music instructional staff for four years, and I would like to continue this position, because I have such a strong feeling that I want my students to have the same musical opportunities that I had while in high school. Right now, I am speaking on behalf of our high school music department, who is currently in New Orleans, traveling and expanding their music education. Without enough staff to dedicate their time and motivation to our music department, these kinds of traveling opportunities would not be possible. I was fortunate enough to travel to Disney World while I was in high school, and I think this is one of, this was a core memory for me, and I was able to shape the way that I act, and just the music department in general has had me gain so much, just life lessons. I think that downsizing this department, our full-time staff, would have to reduce the amount of programs that we could offer, and this is from elementary school to high school. If we don't have enough people to dedicate enough time to all of the different ensembles and music programs that we offer, we will not be able to sustain these programs, and we will see our music department shrink. The staff that we currently have is already stretched thin with all of these programs, but they care, and they want to keep these programs alive, but it might not be possible if we don't have enough people. I think it is so important that we have all the positions that are currently covered be covered for the next school year and years to come, or else we will see this music department dwindle, and with that, student morale, and we will also not be able to earn our best communities for music education that we've had for the past twelve years. I, and so many other community members, are very worried and concerned about what this proposed decision would do to our program that we have been trying to grow for years. As I see all of these people in this room, I see current marching band students that I have been working with for four years, I see past teachers that have influenced me, that have influenced me to pursue education, because I will be starting a high school teaching position next year, and I owe all of that to all of my past teachers and the music department that helped me become who I am. And I urge you to make the decision to keep our music department from shrinking and causing detrimental consequences to our students. Thank you for your time.
Jerry Mascaro.
That was gonna be difficult to follow. Thank you, Jenna, thank you very much. Jerry Mascaro from Jackson Township. Good evening. I'm not speaking to you this evening as a member of the Music Boosters, because I am not. I'm not speaking to you as a parent of a student in the music program, because I am not. I'm speaking to you this evening because I'm a taxpayer concerned about the future of Spring Grove's music department. I have nothing to gain from speaking to you tonight, but the current and future music students at Spring Grove have a great deal to lose. I'm speaking to you tonight to ask you, no, to plead you, to not approve any budget that reduces the number of directors or educators in the music department. Years ago, there were ten music educators. In two thousand and nine, the department was reduced to nine. In two thousand and twelve, it was reduced to eight due to a retirement with a promise that the reduction would be temporary. In two thousand and twenty, a completely new program, Modern Band, was added with no new educators to support it. In fact, the ensemble educators were asked to cover music classes in other buildings. This year, with block scheduling, music directors are being asked to cover more music classes in other buildings. In two thousand and twenty-three, I understand the school board was presented with high school and other department scheduling data that described the amount of time and effort that it takes to cover all the music ensembles and music education in all the buildings and all the grades. Student involvement is increasing. To save time and to give others an opportunity to speak, I would ask you to please review that material, or ask music department chair Tim Buck to review it with you and other data that he has before you approve this proposal. During the March of this year Budget and Finance Committee meeting, the administration presented a recommendation that strongly recommended to not fill the position that's been vacated by the high school and middle school band director and music educator. You should be aware that the position vacated, this position vacated also directs the high school marching band. If the administration thinks they can simply replace that position by moving the current directors and educators around the district and cover marching band, they are mistaken. This was attempted before, and it did not work out well. They stated that there would be minimal impact to students in music education. Again, they are sorely mistaken. Of the fifteen school districts in York and Adams County, Spring Grove is sixth of fifteen in terms of district size. Spring Grove is currently twelve of fifteen in terms of district size to music department staff. If you approve the proposal to reduce the music department over twelve percent to seven staff, Spring Grove will move to dead last fifteen of fifteen. If you approve the proposal, there will be a significant loss of our opportunities for students who want to achieve excellence in music performance. PMEA District Seven is one of the most competitive districts in Pennsylvania, next to District Thirteen, and it will be impossible for Spring Grove to compete and succeed at the levels we have achieved in the past. Spring Grove has achieved best communities for music education for twelve, twelve? I had eleven here, but I was corrected by Jenna, twelve years straight. Based on these proposed changes, we would not have enough points on the program side of the application to gain recognition in two thousand and twenty-six, and this does not account for points for support from school board, district, building administration, teachers, and community. Three of my children benefited greatly from the music education in ensembles they participated with while they were here. My son went on to make a career of music performance, he is successful and doing well because of the music education that began right here. I am fearful for the other, excuse me, I am fearful for the other students and families here tonight that they will not be able to benefit from the music education at Spring Grove in the same way that my children have. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Alyssa Young.
Good evening, Alyssa Young, Jackson Township. My name is Alyssa Young, and I'll be speaking about the high school band director position. I have a current fifth-grade student and a seventh-grade student. Both of my kiddos have been involved in the music programs since starting orchestra in the third grade. That has evolved into band, chorus, jazz band, honors band, and select strings. As you can see, music is a huge part of our lives. My daughter has anxiety, and she's actually going to be speaking after me tonight, and all the transitions between schools and the various teachers, there's been one constant: the music department. Music has been her way of escaping the stress of her everyday world. I can go on and on about how amazingly well these music teachers work together. They have each other's backs, they communicate with one another, and they are a family. And most importantly, they do it all for our students. As sad as we are to see him go, we completely understand Mr. Showalter's decision. But here is my fear: Our Spring Grove music family is losing a member, and they are already spread so thin. It would be devastating for our students if there's additional stress and strain that forces another, that forces another family member to leave. Music is an outlet for a lot of students. Not every student is going to be a scholar or an athlete, but music, music can be a lifelong strength and lifelong love. It can give them a confidence nothing else might be able to give them. It helps them grow into better and more well-rounded people. Not to mention the fact that music involvement has been linked to improved performance on achievement tests, particularly in areas like language arts, science, and math. It's also the extra activities that give our kids a place in this crazy world. I'm also a teacher in a surrounding school district, and being a kid today is hard. It's hard to find a friend, it's hard to find a way to fit in, and it's hard to find a place you belong. Activities like marching band, jazz band, Orion, Don't fret, Modern Band, these are all some of the areas where friendships are made that might never have formed in a regular school day. These experiences also bring our community together. Whether it's singing at the community tree lighting, or playing at our state and nation's capitol, these young musicians are bringing joy to others. If this position is not filled, there is a fear these extra activities would not take place. In closing, it would be detrimental to our students in the district if we do not replace this music position, or any future music position that may occur. You will be spreading the other music teachers too thin, which unfortunately might make them leave our hardly-ranked school district. After all, Spring Grove has been named as best communities for music education for twelve consecutive years. I urge you to reconsider these proposed cuts. I urge you to please evaluate the impact on our students and the educational opportunities provided by our music programs. You'll be leaving a lot of students without a place to actually feel a part of something bigger than themselves. Thank you.
Molly Young.
Hi, my name is Molly Young from Jackson Township, and I'm in seventh grade. I've been in the music program since third grade. I'm in jazz band, concert band, orchestra, select strings, and chorus. I play viola and trombone with the school, and also play the piano outside of the school. Music has influenced my life in so many ways. I've had anxiety since I was little, and music has been my way to calm myself down and is quite literally the only thing that will help. Whenever I get stressed out about school or some other thing, I play my instruments or I listen to music. Being part of these activities, but especially the extra programs Spring Grove has offered, has helped me develop confidence and a sense of belonging. It has helped me with my grades in school as well. I don't think I would have the courage to speak in public or participate like I do if it wasn't for the music department. I'm afraid that if you do not replace Mr. Showalter's position, many programs could become non-existent. There'd be no concert band or jazz band at the middle. There are so many kids in just these two ensembles who love music so much, and if these two ensembles get cut, a lot of kids will not have a place to have fun and unwind, myself included. Not replacing Mr. Showalter's position could also mean cutting marching band. Just having been to a few band nights, there are so many people who enjoy marching band, and they get so much support from our community. This coming year will be my first year that I am able to do marching band, and I'm really looking forward to it, as well as a lot of my friends. Speaking of friends, these extra opportunities that the music department gives us allows us to form friendships we would not have found otherwise. At our age, friendships are everything. As you can see, I'm injured. I play multiple sports, and I'm a very active person. And now, because of my injury, I'm unable to play sports for about a year. But, being so involved in music is the silver lining. I have a ton of time to practice, get better, and continue to become a leader. If you do not replace Mr. Showalter's position, other music ensembles will get put on the shoulders of other music teachers who already have enough to do. Mr. Buck, for example. He does beginning band for all three elementary schools and Spring Grove Intermediate, not to mention that he also helps out with marching band. It is not physically possible for him to do any other thing, because there are simply not enough days in the week. The same goes for Mr. Brenner and every other music teacher. They all give a hundred and ten percent, but I'm scared that they won't be able to give anymore. So, I'm asking you to please reconsider not replacing Mr. Showalter's position. I speak for every student who's been involved in our music department, or will become, or who will become involved in our music department. Please make sure that we have the same opportunities as the surrounding school districts, and do not take these extra opportunities away from us. Thank you.
Next up is Sean Burkabow.
Burkabow, yeah.
There we go.
My name is Pastor Sean Burkabow, I am from Jackson Township. I have three children in this beloved district, and will be speaking in reference to the Budget and Finance Committee information that was shared to the public about the reallocation of funds, most importantly, not supporting a budget for the high school music department director. Things are busy in the Burkabow household. With spring comes Easter, Easter celebrations, it's holy week, folks. It's spring soccer, I was just at practice and came right here. There's rehearsals, there's concerts, and there's excitement of the musical coming to the season, both of which my daughters performed in, and it was a wonderful time. Our calendar is extremely full, but our hearts are even fuller. These are activities that bring so much joy and energy to our home, and we are grateful for all the ways our children are able to grow and shine in this district. But there's one item that I wasn't prepared for. This day has been extremely hard. Some of you will find out why, and I'm sorry to get emotional, but learning about Mr. Showalter leaving the district to take a position at Central York, and to follow suit that the Budget and Finance Committee is currently planning not to replace that high school position, is where my heart began to sink. Here's what I know personally: When Mr. Showalter is part of the music department, we have a well-oiled machine, a team of eight incredibly talented, dedicated individuals working in harmony. They feed off of one another's creativity, they adapt in the moment, and most importantly, they meet the needs of our students, not just for a concert or for a grade, but for their growth as individuals. In this high school music director position, if it is a In this high school music director position, if it is eliminated, it's not just one position gone, we lose the balance that we have in this district. We shift from harmony to strain, potentially even dissonance, that goes on and on and on, from joy to just getting by. We risk becoming an apartment that is stretched too thin, whose members are constantly on the run, unable to give their best to their students, or even their own families. That is a critical decision that we need to think about. Here are the facts to consider, and I'm on the same page of music that Jerry is on. Spring Grove currently ranks six out of fifteen York County schools with a music staff-student ratio. If this position is not replaced, we drop immediately to dead last, which is fifteenth. That statistic alone should give us pause and concern. And here's my biggest fear, which Molly has shared, Alyssa has shared, Jerry has shared, and also Anna, that this is just the beginning. That if this change will happen, we will start a slow erosion of a program that is currently one of the greatest strengths we have in this district. A group of teachers who pour so much of themselves into the students, they may begin to feel like they are not valued, and that they risk burnout so that they can take care of their own families and find districts that will care for them. This is a very real concern, and I ask you as a school board to request a deeper look into the Budget and Finance Committee's assessment. Ask how they weighed the impact of this decision, not just the pros, not just dollars and cents being saved, but in student experience, in mental health, like Molly shared, in student achievement, in alumni engagement, and in community pride. As a dedicated volunteer, one of the band dads that takes the trailer to and from, I'm a parent of two daughters who absolutely love our music education program and what it brings to their lives. I hope you will fully consider the long-term consequences of this decision before voting on the final budget, because this doesn't just impact one teacher, it impacts every student from first grade through twelfth grade. It even impacts our alumni, those who carry a deep pride in being part of the Grove or carrying rocket pride with them wherever they go. Our district's mission is to challenge and motivate all students to attain their full potential, so I ask you, how do we continue to serve that mission with fewer resources, fewer teachers, and less support for one of the most beloved programs in our schools? I thank you for our time. Let us learn how to learn without limits and actually live into our vision as a school district. Thank you for your time.
Caitlin Wosler.
Alrighty, so I'm gonna change this up a little bit here. Um, I, hello, my name is Caitlin Wosler, Paradise Township, and I'm a senior at Spring Grove Area High School. First off, I would like to thank you all for allowing me to speak this evening, as well as Mr. Lehman and Dr. Ludwig for their support of Special Olympics. I am here tonight as an ambassador for the Special Olympics program at Spring Grove. I, first, I would like to shout out the unified Bachi team, who are not only making it to regionals in their second season ever, but also placing seventh at the competition. The students on this The students on this team I lost it. Have shown the amazingness of inclusion. In addition to competing, two students, Caitlin and Zoe, had the honor to escort the Pennsylvania State Police in the flame ceremony. We have now moved into our unified track and field season. This year, our team has almost doubled in size. This Wednesday, April sixteenth, we will have our first track meet. We will also have a track meet on April twenty-second, and on May first, we will celebrate our seniors at our home track meet. This past Friday, we also had the annual funds and fun festival, which hosted over a hundred and fifty special education students in the high school. It was a very successful day. Um, Special Olympics is also hosting the first annual Splash Fest on Friday, May ninth, at Spring Grove Elementary from five to eight P.M. During this event, there will be fire trucks, games, water activities, food trucks, live music, and more. The event is free to attend, and all proceeds from the event will go to supporting the unified sports teams at Spring Grove. Lastly, we would like to thank the school board for your continued support of our programs. Your support has been pinnacle in our success so far and is pinnacle in our future successes. Thank you.
Anthony Miller. Very formal.
Hi, Tony Miller, uh, Higginburg Township, teacher at Spring Grove High School and Wellness Department Chair. I'm here with my staff, so I'm gonna bow out and let them take some of my time. But thank you to both the board and the school administration for the opportunity to speak tonight. Please know that as teachers of Spring Grove, we are all grateful for the opportunity to be part of our school system, our school community. Tonight, we're in here in concern for our future and what we can provide for our students. I have several members wishing to speak at each level, so I've asked my department to be brief, so I'll turn it over to the elementary folks first.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Whalen, and I teach at Spring Grove Elementary, and this is Victoria Bortner. I teach at Paradise Township. Um, thank you for your time. Having taught first twenty-four years and in this district for eighteen years as an elementary PE wellness teacher, I am very proud of our PE wellness program and the support we've been given in our school district and our goals to promote lifelong fitness. I'm standing before you to express my concerns as you are hearing about the potential staff hiring freeze and the effect it could have on the opportunities we currently provide for our students and their health. A healthy body and a healthy mind equals a healthy student in the classroom. It is imperative that our elementary-level PE wellness programs can continue to have the consistency with a PE wellness teacher at each building. It starts at the elementary level, fostering students' physical health and fitness, developing their ability to form healthy habits and behaviors, which help lead to fighting childhood obesity and other health issues as we see so much in our society today. Exposing our students to a variety of opportunities to be physically active, our program's at all levels instills a lifelong appreciation for staying active, promoting healthy habits that will benefit them throughout their academic years and beyond. Thank you for your time.
Hello, I'm Amanda Cooper. Uh, I teach here at the middle school, uh, speaking on behalf of Jason Cole as well. He had some family obligations tonight. Uh, I taught, uh, beginning my career at the high school, uh, did some other things, taught in some other districts, and came back here because of the program that we offer students. Um, but at the middle school, uh, there have been changes over the years. Before my tenure, uh, we had three teachers, uh, in two thousand and twelve, in a reduction of staff, that was cut to two. Since then, time with students has gotten reduced, uh, due to the sustainability of having two teachers teach all six hundred and forty-five students that are in the building, uh, at the middle school. Uh, in a culture that we have flooded with technology, uh, sedentary lifestyles, processed food, we, PE is necessary. Uh, PE is one of the most important things, I think, that students need right now. Uh, we alternate between our fitness activities and large group cooperative games, uh, throughout the week. Uh, students need that face-to-face interaction. Students need to learn how to be together, need to learn how to problem solve, uh, interpersonal skills, and most importantly, they need movement, more movement than they need sitting. Uh, we've had many parents thank us for getting their students excited about, uh, activity, getting excited about learning about their cardiovascular system and health and how to improve it. Uh, and we've had students move on to the high school level and be excited about the foundation that we built here to move there and then have autonomy over the choices that they have. Many more opportunities up there with that, due to the teachers and that we have up there. Uh, losing a position at any level due to budget cuts, I don't think is an option. Um, if it happens, students lose, and that's what we want to avoid. We want the best for our kids and this community. Uh, we want the best for this community. Um, I think that overall health and wellness of our community deteriorates if we lose a PE position here. Um, I know that budget concerns are legitimate, there's no doubt about that, um, but taking away opportunities for students to be active and learn how to be healthy for their entire lives, uh, is a bigger issue and in the, in the big picture. Um, I do appreciate your time and consideration this evening, um, but I do think, big picture, we, uh, we need kids to be healthy, and that's what we're here for.
Real quick, Eric Ziger, high school, uh, health and phys ed teacher, alum, uh, parent of students in the district, two graduates and two currently in. Been teaching here twenty-seven years and love this place. I was so excited when I got out of college and was able to come back to my hometown and get a job. Our phys ed program at the high school is above and beyond, in my opinion, any other high school in the area. We have schools, and Tony would echo this, that come to see what we're doing at Spring Grove. We are above and beyond the old school, old school, raw the ball, let's just go have regular phys ed. The opportunities our kids have are next to none, in my opinion, and if we take a teacher away at the high school, we are going to be taking away opportunities for our kids to have these things that we provide for them on a consistent basis. I just really ask you to reconsider, um, the potential of losing a position.
So you've heard from my staff, I'm the department chair, I'm also the elder of this group, so throughout my tenure, I've seen our department continue to dwindle. We used to have swimming grades one to eight. If we change and we pull some from the high school, there's very good, good chance that we don't have swimming at all. Last year, I was working to try to bring swimming back. This year, I'm not even worried, I'm not even sure we're gonna have swimming at the high school. Without filling the president vacant position at New Salem is not a question of if, but of how many programs will get cut for kids. We have upwards of ninety-seven percent of our kids in our district taking our health and phys ed programs each year. That's over four thousand students with just eleven teachers.
Tony, we're gonna have to ask you to wrap it up.
I'll close. Thank you for your time. Please make that consideration as you make your decisions.
So, we are very close to our thirty minutes, so I would need a motion from the board to, um, continue with public comment.
I will make that motion to question you. I would like to hear more from the public.
Second, roll call vote on continuing public comment.
Arshinger.
Yes.
Ritz.
Yep.
Willset.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Sheer. Baum.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Stein.
Yeah.
Yes. Alright, so I have a stack here. I'm just going to call them out, um, as they're listed here, and if you decide not to speak, just, um, oh, there's more, Suzanne, there's more. Um, so the first person up I see is Heather Lehman.
Thirty more minutes.
We'll do thirty more minutes and then go back to a motion to continue.
Good evening, members of the board, administration, faculty, students, and community members. My name is Heather Lehman. I reside in North Cudores Township. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am here to express my concern with the recent approval process of the twenty-twenty-five-twenty-eight comprehensive district plan, specifically regarding the removal of the district diversity statement. As you know, the section reads, "We will treat all people with equality, dignity, and respect. We will educate all students to understand, accept, and value all members of the world community, and we invite the community at large to join with us in support of this mission." This powerful message has historically been part of the final version of the plan submitted to PDE, and for good reason. It reflects the values that many in our community expect to see in the district's leadership and direction. This year, the draft of the plan that was publicized for community review included that statement. Prior documentation on the steering committee's discussions include the statement, "The district's steering committee agreed to recommend not altering components of a comprehensive plan, including the mission, vision, educational values, and district diversity statement." It wasn't until just before the vote that it was communicated somewhat incidentally this section would not be included in the final version. This raises two key concerns. First, if the purpose of publicizing a plan in advance is to give the community an opportunity to weigh in, then altering it without proper notice undermines that process. Second, removing the diversity statement from the final version without clear explanation or sufficient public awareness is not a, is not just a procedural shift, it's a shift in how the district publicly expresses its values. Regardless of whether the statement was technically optional, its consistent inclusion in past plans has carried weight. Choosing to exclude it now and doing so in a way that limited community awareness and input sends a different kind of message, one that could suggest a retreat from values of equity, dignity, and respect, at a time when clarity and consistency are more important than ever. My request for you tonight is simple. Moving forward, I ask for greater transparency and straightforward communication, especially when it comes to changes in public-facing documents that reflect the heart of who we are as a district. When the process is clear and the communication is honest, trust is built, and trust is something our entire community depends on. Thank you for your time.
Rose Messinger. Rose Messinger.
Hi, I'm Rose Messinger. I reside in Jackson Township, and I'm actually speaking on behalf of my daughter, Amelia Messinger. She's a sophomore at the high school and very much involved in the music department. Uh, she's currently in New Orleans, so I promised I would read this for her. Uh, dear school board, I'm a student, I live in Spring Grove. I'm a student who is heavily involved in the music department at the high school. I've been in music for about five years, uh, since I was younger. I'm in symphonic band, jazz ensemble, stage band, concert choir, expressions, and I'm taking music classes such as music theory and modern band one. I'm writing to express my concern with the position of our amazing resigning band director, Mr. Showalter. As a member of the music department, I'm very passionate and truly committed to my work and what I do. Throughout school, I have struggled heavily as a student and with social skills, and joining music has changed my life. Joining the music department has developed me as a person, and I've made more friends than I've ever had. My directors have had such a heavy, important impact on my life and my success, and I couldn't thank them more. So as a student in music, I feel it's very important to express the impact this proposed, uh, position cut could have on us as students and as part of the music department. I understand the concern of budgets within our district, however, there are so many ways that this will affect students and the directors in this department. Our directors are already doing so much with ensembles. For example, Mrs. Kirk Patrick directs all three choir groups and orchestra at our high school. Mr. Brenner directs the modern band groups and our jazz group, and also helps Mr. Showalter with our percussion, our percussionists in symphonic band. Mr. Showalter directs band at both the middle school and high school and does so much with marching band as well. These directors do so much already and are burdened with the additional responsibilities as our directors, as they do personally. If we cut this position, we could lose more directors than we are currently losing. Not only that, but our district has one of the highest-ranked schools for music, and that would drop drastically with the student-to-teacher ratio. As someone planning to go into music education or performance, this has a major impact on my music education and performance system and will affect those involved. I know many people majoring or planning to major in music, people like my sister, who are, who has a major passion for music and is studying at IUP as a music major. So as I understand there is a financial issue, please consider how deeply this will affect the students and directors of the Spring Grove Music Department. Thank you.
Warren Parkhurst. Warren Parkhurst.
Good evening, board members. My name is Warren Parkhurst. I'm from North Cudores Township. I'm a junior in Spring Grove Area High School, and this evening I come to you to read a few letters from our music department students, starting with my own. I'm going to be completely honest. I put off writing, I put off writing this letter because it has things in it that I'm not sure I've told anyone, but I came to the realization that these things are important to how I've come to be me and how the music directors have influenced me. When I was little, I was eager to join orchestra. I had been at all the assemblies the prior years, and I finally got to third grade, grabbed into my sister's old violin and signed up. There, I met Mrs. Gross, whom I instantly came to love as a teacher. It became one of my favorite parts of the day. Admittedly, I don't have the best of memories, so years that followed, I forgot how to play, so I would pretend to play. I didn't leave because I loved seeing Mrs. Gross. In fourth grade, I thought for some reason I'd be able to remember better, and I signed up to join band. I played the saxophone and met Mr. Buck, who again became one of my favorite people. I forgot once more, and in hindsight, don't know how I didn't think that would happen, but I again stayed just to see Mr. Buck every day. In intermediate school, I joined chorus. I didn't meet Mr. Robinson there, but I already knew I loved him, which is part of why I joined to begin with. Eventually, at one of the concerts, I came to the conclusion that it was all too much for me, so I had done what I refused to do previously and left. In the time after that, I had spent time with the wrong kind of people. I made bad decisions, ones that I shouldn't get into, but things that weren't I made bad decisions, ones that I shouldn't get into, but things that weren't exactly help my voice. This went on for a couple of years. Eventually, I decided to join Mr. Fake's chorus and immediately remembered how great it was. Mr. Fake and I might have had the strongest connection that I had to directors years prior, probably because it was a smaller room with less people and we got to talk more. I loved choir, and I knew I wanted to sing for a long time, but I didn't stop what I had started until freshman year of high school. Previously, I had made connections with the music directors, but in freshman year of high school in Mrs. Kay's choir, I had made the strongest connections with my student peers than ever before. And a major part of that is just how much Mrs. Kay encourages us to work in small groups together. This is where I got closer to one of my friends that I had for about a year, and it was then that I decided to do away with my bad decisions. I didn't spend enough time in band to get to have Mr. Showalter as a teacher, but I can only imagine it was the same feeling as the other directors. And I doubt that any of them have a minor impact on our students because they've given some of the best years of my life so far. I would hate for any students in the future to not have that. Now a letter from Sierra Goffrey. Dear members of the school board, it is not easy to come before a group of adults or even write to a group of adults asking them to save something that has become my safe space. It's not easy to ask them to reconsider a decision that they are trying to make to get rid of the position that was previously filled by Mr. Showalter. While I've never been in a class with Mr. Showalter, I can confidently say that through marching band, I have learned so much. I will never forget the conversations that I've had before football games or during band camp, where Mr. Showalter will tell us about his college life or the lessons he's learned as he's gotten older. I'll never forget Larry the Lobster, who taught us that you have to be uncomfortable to grow. I'll never forget the motto that everything in life is a choice, and that I can choose how to respond to something even if I can't choose the situation I'm in. These lessons are taught by any director who spends hundreds of hours with the same students running sets for a show, and younger students should probably have the opportunity to feel that connection with a director who isn't spread paper thin. I'm in chorus and concert choir at the high school, and music has always been a huge part of my life. I was raised doing an activity that required music, and though I never particularly enjoyed general music in elementary school, once I hit intermediate school, I joined chorus. While those years might have been spent during COVID, I've continued in choir ever since. The people in the theater department and music department in general have seen me at my worst. After nights of no sleep because of the test I've been stressing about, they've seen me at my best. The days where I've had an amazing performance or where I've just found out something great is happening. Thank you. I can't stand before you today in person because I'm currently on a trip with those people. I'm on a trip with the people who have made me feel like I belong. Mr. Showalter and all the other directors here at Spring Grove have given me a place that I can go and people I can turn to when I've had a bad day. They've given me a friendly face, and they've taught me valuable life lessons. Thank you for your time, Sierra Goffrey. Now a letter from Clara Rollhauser. The music department has been instrumental in my growth as a singer, providing me with countless opportunities to enhance my skills and focus. Through engagement performances and collaboration with talented peers, I have developed both my vocal technique and my ability to concentrate, learning to express myself more confidently on stage. The supportive environment, along with the guidance from dedicated instructors, has fostered a rich learning experience that has not only improved my musical abilities, but has also deepened my appreciation for the art of singing and the connections made with fellow musicians. Thank you for your time.
Wrong button there. Gavin Minatola.
Good evening, school board. My name is Gavin Minatola, Heidelberg Township. I would first like to read a letter from a fellow student who is unable to be here tonight because they're in New Orleans. This is from Miles Krishan. Dear school board members, as a current and long-running Spring Grove music student, I would like to express my concern for the planned budget cuts for the following years. When stating the pros of not filling Mr. Showalter's position, you cite minimal impact to the students' music education. While I myself have never had a class with Mr. Showalter, the small interactions I've had with him were some of my favorites. I have been in choir since elementary school, and I can confidently say that I would not be here today if it were not for the incredible members and staff of the music department. With the teachers in the music department already spread so thin, limiting them to seven would not only give us the worst music teacher-to-student ratio in your county, but would also be detrimental to many of the performances held by the music department every year. This proposal would severely limit the time being dedicated to sectionals and small group instruction. Without this time, large productions like our spring musical would suffer greatly and will never beat the spectacular production the students of the music department worked tirelessly to put on. If there truly is minimal impact on the students' music education, then we would not be writing these letters. We would not be fighting for the place we've come to love. From the students' music education, please don't tear down the home we worked so hard to build. Now I'd like to make personal remarks. Again, I am Gavin Minatola. I am a part of the Spring Grove Chorus, Concert Choir, Expressions, International Thebesian Society, TRINA and the TRINA Music Society. Additionally, I am a vocalist and keyboard player for the York Christian Fellowship Worship Band. I'm also an actor, having performed in twenty-two productions in the last eight years, spanning over four different venues, the Eichelberger, the Majestic, the Belmont, and of course, our Spring Grove stage here. My freshman and sophomore year, I only qualified for chorus, which is a more beginner choir. During my sophomore year, I told Mrs. Kirkpatrick I really wanted to pursue getting into a concert choir level ability by the end of the year. All throughout my sophomore year, Mrs. Kirkpatrick would work with me a lot. She taught me so much and worked with me mainly through sectional time and that small group time that is so crucial. For my next year, my junior year, I not only got into concert choir, but I also got into expressions. I got a major singing role in this year's musical, and I successfully auditioned as a vocalist for the YCF Band. It was a huge improvement from where I was before sophomore year to where I was after sophomore year. Without these sectional times with Mrs. Kay, I wouldn't be standing here before you today. I wouldn't be standing here because I would have never been able to make that improvement, and I'm genuinely not sure if I would have stuck with singing because I would have felt like I'm going nowhere. Unfortunately, with this budget cut, those sectional times and opportunity to work with Mrs. Kay like I was able to may not be an option anymore. And I know younger students that will genuinely be hurt by that. Expressions recently took a trip here to middle school to visit the choir. After performing for them, we got a chance to go and talk with the students. And as I was talking to some guys, they said they would love to do what we do and be part of a group like that. I told them Mrs. Kay is a great teacher who doesn't hesitate to help you reach your goals, and if you go to sectionals and you work with her in that additional time, you will improve and pretty soon could be in a position to get into expressions. And they were so excited. That room full of younger choir students who look up to us and want to be like us are excited to come to the high school and improve their abilities. They're expecting it. But if there's no more sectional times and they only get to see Mrs. Kay occasionally in class and they have to rely only on themselves to get to those goals, I'm afraid they're gonna be very disappointed when I have the opportunity to reach their full potential like I did. So I want to close with this. I've seen that the school board believes this cut will have a minimal impact on students. I personally disagree with that. But even if you still believe that, remember this. The thing about something being minimal is that it only has room to grow bigger. It may seem minimal to you now, but those minimal impacts are gonna build up over time. Plants start with a tiny seed, and it seems very small at first. But once you've planted it and it starts growing, it's gonna turn into something big. And I would hate to see that this situation grow to a situation bigger and worse than we thought to the point where it's too late. Okay, thank you. The only way to make sure this won't grow into something uncontrollable is to not plant the seed. So I ask that you please rethink this budget cut, no matter how small of an impact it may seem to you, mainly for our future generation of students. But I would like to say, no matter what happens tonight, I'm grateful for all of you giving so much of your time. I hope you have a great holiday weekend. God bless you and have a good night.
Anne Strickland.
Good evening, guys. Anne Strickland, I'm a Spring Riverer. I'm also an employee at Spring Grove School. I am going to go way off topic to everything that's been going on here. I totally, you guys have my one hundred percent support in everything. When I see that there's gonna be cuts to instructional and support staff, I am support staff. Starting in September will be my twentieth year. When I first started here, I'm in the nutrition department. We used to do ninety breakfasts in the morning. That was a good day. Three hundred lunches approximately, phenomenal lunch. Right now, we are doing three hundred and eighty breakfasts in the morning and five hundred and fifty lunches every day. We don't have the same amount of staff that we had when I started. We are cut. We have no substitutes. I see there's three subs on the agenda tonight. Totally grateful for that. We need them. Officer Mike was our head cashier today. Suzanne Sterner gives up her lunchtime to come over and work with us. We have no help. The high school started out with twelve to thirteen. Their staff is now at eight. They do eight hundred lunches a day. They do approximately four hundred lunches. Oh, everybody here can. They do approximately four hundred breakfasts in the morning. They do eight hundred lunches. We can't afford any more cuts. We have been cut to the core. When I started, like I said, we had a couple peanut allergies, maybe a milk allergy. Now, we have gluten, we have milk, we have wheat, you name it. We can't screw up, or we will hurt a child. We are constantly, I have a child that's EpiPen allergic. I have to make her food every morning. Nobody else can touch it. It is hers. If I screw up and she has to have the EpiPen, my job's gone. I don't think people understand how much we actually do. Our teachers are our lifeblood, and I'm telling you right now, too. We see every morning in an email, two teachers out, sorry, no coverage. They're hurting just as bad as we are. We and our teachers at the elementary get along phenomenally. We work as a team all the time. They are great with us. They make up the extra when they have to cover somebody else's class. They make sure we still get our lunch orders. They make sure of everything. And I don't think you guys understand, too. We don't just snap food on a tray for these kids. We talk to five hundred and fifty kids individually through that line every day. We also unload trucks. We have to prepare food and everything else, and we're expected to do it shorthanded every day. I know you guys have to do your job. I understand that. But to support staff is someplace you can't cut. I'm sorry, nor the teachers, nor them. They're doing double duty. I watch it for them every day. But like I said, there's days we run five and six people. Mr. Zap comes and helps us anytime he can because it used to be his department. He understands. The teachers pitch in as much as they can. But I just wanted to give you, board members, an idea of what we do every day. And I tell you what, I love my job. I love my job. And I will say one other thing I need to bring it up. Most of your nutrition department is a nine-month position. We all used to work custodial over the summer. Apparently, that's gone for us. So I've heard. I want it to be, somebody tell us the truth. I want to know. The other thing is, a couple of my coworkers have been hearing rumors, and I hope you guys address it or send us an email, whatever. They're very concerned that every side's gonna close. My crew that I work with, they use it, and they're concerned that it's gonna go. If you can do nothing more than just send us an email with exactly what's going on, we'd love to hear from you guys. I wish you guys would come over and spend time with us, see what our concerns are. We work hard. We work hard. And it starts with us and the teachers. And like I said, we have a wonderful support with our teachers and at the school. I couldn't ask for a better team to work with. But we cannot afford to go down any more than what we are. We are at rock bottom for what we can get done and the amount of hours we're allotted every day. I'm done. Thank you.
Sky Beck.
Hello, my name is Sky Beck. I reside in Paradise Township. And before I start, I would like to ask for forgiveness for any outbreak of emotion or anxiety I may show. Hello, Sky Beck. I read at the board meeting on March twenty-fourth and spoke in defense of the music department at Spring Grove High School. This time, I speak for another student who couldn't be here as he is on the trip to New Orleans, possible through the intense dedication the music teachers have given us in our department. This letter is from Lucas Berman. Dear board members, administration, faculty, and others in attendance, I am writing to address the propositions discussed at the recent Budget and Finance Committee meeting, specifically the implications of the potential loss of one of our most valuable music positions. As you may know, Mr. Showalter, our high school and middle school band director, has resigned from his position as a music director in the Spring Grove Area School District. Recently, I learned that the administration has recommended not filling his invaluable position, citing a lack of student impact as the primary reason. In this letter, I will discuss not only the immeasurable impact that Spring Grove's music department has had on me, but also how its loss would negatively affect my fellow students and future Spring Grove students across the district. Throughout my time at Spring Grove, I have taken full advantage of the opportunities provided by our exceptional music program, including performances in PNEA ensembles, such as orchestra at the district's level and choir at the all eastern level. With Mr. Showalter's encouragement, I mustered the courage to audition for the PNEA District Seven Band this year. Although I was not selected, I am immensely grateful for the support I received from Mr. Showalter, who helped me work towards my fullest potential. I would also like to extend my gratitude to Mrs. Kirkpatrick for her extraordinary efforts in guiding me toward achieving my goals in both choir and orchestra. Without her expertise, I doubt I would have had the confidence to audition for these advanced ensembles. Through their mentorship, I have discovered that music is not just a hobby for me, but a lifelong passion. I am proud to have been accepted into the Oberlin Conservatory of Music, a top-ten school for voice in the world where I will study vocal performance. Both of these high school directors have played a significant role in my musical journey, and I can hardly express the level of impact they have had on me personally and as a musician. Thank you, Mrs. Kirkpatrick and Mr. Showalter. Now, speaking on behalf of my peers, the music faculty at Spring Grove has had an indescribably profound impact on all who've been fortunate enough to work with them. I have talked with several classmates about Mrs. Kay and her experiences with her, and they consistently highlight her exceptional dedication to improving students, not only as individuals, but also as team members singing in harmony in a choir or pushing the boundaries through challenging orchestral works. While I haven't worked much with Mr. Brenner, I believe that the remarkable achievements of our select modern bands speak for themselves. Under his guidance, it has reached all-state level and has helped establish a movement nationwide for the inclusion of modern band in schools. As a person, Mr. Brenner demonstrates unwavering commitment to his students, always making time to teach music and to ensure that they are well, creating a welcoming environment where students feel appreciated. Lastly, Mr. Showalter, our soon-to-be departing band director, goes above and beyond to teach each student according to their ability level, preparing them for the advanced music our symphonic band performs. He dedicates immense effort to maintaining the high standards of our ensemble. I have heard from several district teachers that many students walk into their classrooms in tears upon hearing of Mr. Showalter's departure. This alone speaks volumes about the strong bond he forms with his students. So where am I going with this? As you know, the district is considering not filling Mr. Showalter's position after his departure. This decision would leave the Spring Grove Music Department so stretched thin that programs may have to be cut. Without adequate music educators, strong connections between teachers and students could be lost. This would lead to fewer students like me as they would not receive the support needed to reach their fullest potential. If this trend continues, music may be perceived merely as another class. Spring Grove could lose its standing as a leading music school in the nation and might risk losing its entire music department altogether. Therefore, for the sake of the future of music in Spring Grove's community, I urge you to thoughtfully consider the implications of this recommendation and the profound impact it could have on our students' community. Thank you for your time. From Lucas Berman. I myself never got to know Mr. Showalter very personally because I didn't join any of that until my junior year and I am a senior. But as I am standing here shaking in front of you guys, the only thing I can say is that from the bottom of my heart, please know that all of us are here because we want you to hear what we have to say. Thank you for your time.
I guess we'll put it back to the board. We have ten more people that have signed up to speak. If we want to do another thirty minutes and each person gets three minutes, or if we want to just let them all, we have ten more people to get through. So I would need a motion to continue public comment. Second, to continue with public comment in its five-minute format for ten more people. Do we want to evaluate? Do we? Okay, go ahead. Are we good? Okay, so. Second, roll call vote on three minutes for ten people.
Wilson.
Yes.
Baum.
Yep.
Ritz.
Yeah.
Mike.
Yes.
Ramsey. Kurt. Stein. Rorabon.
Yes. All right, so, next person is Ben Trayer. Three minutes, just a reminder for all the people remaining.
Good evening. My name is Benjamin Trayer of North Cadore's Township. I'm a student here at Spring Grove High School, and I come before you today not only as a student, but someone who's here to speak about free critical developments in our legal system and how it may affect yours, our schools, and to encourage your decision regarding these statements. I'm here to talk about the Executive Order ending racial and gender-based discussions in K-12 schools, the Department of Education's Directive ordering the dismantling of diversity, equity, and inclusion programs, and the House Resolution eight hundred and ninety-nine introducing the one hundred and nineteenth Congress which seeks to eliminate the U.S. Department of Education entirely. These federal actions undermine the authority of this state. First, these orders represent federal overreach. Education decisions in Pennsylvania should be made by Pennsylvanians, by our educators, parents, students, and local school boards like yourself. Threatening to strip schools of funding for discussing race, gender, or inequality is unjust and against democracy. Second, these actions violate our constitutional rights, particularly our rights to freedom of speech and academic freedom. Teachers should be able to engage students in honest, age-appropriate conversations about history, society, and identity. And third, rolling back D E I programs directly harms marginalized communities. These programs were created to ensure fairness and belonging to support students of color, L G T V Q plus students, immigrant students, and others who has been historically looked down upon, looked, been overlooked or underserved. Ending these supports does not create equality, it deepens inequality. But Pennsylvania is not powerless. Our state still holds control over public education. We can pass laws to protect inclusive curriculum, uphold our teachers' rights to maintain these programs, and support all of our students. With these programs, life would be like, without these programs, life would be like this. I prefer it to be like this. Historically, we have, these people have been overlooked. With these programs, we create equality here at all of our schools. Thank you. And local s- school districts like ours can to, continue to honor our commitment to equality, even if it minds means finding alternative funding or resources. I ask this school board and all of the people in this room to not rush into compliance of these programs. I encourage you to fight to preserve the autonomy of our schools and the safety of our students. Thank you.
Next, I have Gabriel Parish.
My name is, uh, Gabriel Parish, uh, of North Cadore's Township. Uh, good evening, uh, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Um, I'm here to address, uh, concerns of the, uh, music bu- uh, the music budget being cut. Uh, while budgetary concerns, uh, constraints, and shifting priorities are real challenges, reducing the music department at Spring Grove is an impactful decision that overall affects, affects the district's long-term goals of producing a well-rounded, uh, hi- high-achieving students. For one, music in, music enhances academic achievement. Music education improves cognitive development, boosts math and reading skills, and enhances memory and attention. Students involved in music often outperform their peers on standardized tests, and this contributes to the average GPA at Spring Grove Area High School, which I believe to be three point five-two. And, uh, cutting parts of the music department truly co- contradicts the district's mission to foster academic excellence. Furthermore, music is more than just performance. It's a critical outlet for self-expression, emotional development, and collaboration. In a time when student, when student mental health is a national concern, removing opportunities for creative engagement is counterpro- counterproductive. Music gives students a sense of identity and belonging, and often serving as a lifeline for those who struggle in other areas. As I quote from a student here from Spring Grove who couldn't be here today, named Ezra Martin, who eloquently stated, "Without the music department and the teachers in it, I would be lucky if I did well enough to get a job at McDonald's for the rest of my life," end quote. Additionally, music programs often serve as the heart of cult, the, of school culture through concerts, marching bands, musicals, and community events. These experiences bring students, families, and communities together. Removing parts of that weakens these important community connections and takes away that ma- takes away something that makes Spring Grove truly unique. Thank you. While cutting, cutting a music position may save money in the short term, the long-term costs in student engagement, academic, academic performance, and community support are far greater. In short, cuts in the music department is not just a financial decision, it's a decision of values. If Spring Grove truly believes in educating a child, I urge you to reconsider cutting it. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Rowan Bonner. Rowan Bonner.
Good evening, members of the school board and, uh, Spring Grove community, I'm Rowan Bonner, Jackson Township, and I, uh, in eighth grade. Uh, music has been an important part of my life in many different aspects, so much so that I've been in every part of musical ensembles to, available to me since third grade. These include concert band, jazz band, choir, O'Ryan Orchestra, select strings, Don't Fret, the musical, and marching band. In addition, I've been a part of several different select concert ensembles such as Pigeon Hills County Choir and Honors Day. These experiences have shaped my life in ways nothing else could. If I hadn't been presented such opportunities, I wouldn't be the person I am today. Music is an important, and music is important to me because it isn't just an extracurricular. It's a staple to my schooling and, music teaches important lessons that aren't just learning how to play music. It teaches hard work through practicing and playing, discipline through putting in time to play well, teamwork because there isn't a single ensemble with just one person, and much more. Music involves finding an instrument or verse part that suits you, and playing a role in the ensemble. Not only is that something we do here in the Spring Grove Music Department, it's an essential skill to keep a functioning, modern society. To me, music is more than a hobby, passion, or extracurricular. I urge you to reconsider cutting the music department's budget. Instead, let's invest it, because when you support the arts, you're supporting the growth and success in students like me. Thank you.
So, I am seeing, I think it's Diane Kleptka? Dionne? Dionne? Sorry. Yep, I tried, aim for effort.
Hi, I'm Dionne Klepeck, Pastor Dionne Klepeck. Um, I am in the North Cadore's Township, and I have had two daughters in the school system. Currently, one a senior about to graduate, who has been very active in the music department. Um, if I understand the current situation correctly, um, this board has quite a challenging problem to solve. So I feel for you in, um, trying to figure out how to solve this problem. Um, I have, I also have questions about, um, the published revenue sources, specifically the federal tax revenue amounts. Uh, but that this is not a conversation, I'll just let that hang. Um, and it's three minutes and not five, so I'm gonna jump ahead a little bit in what I've prepared. Um, I am here to urge you to consider other options before making a decision that cannot easily be, be undone. Cutting staff when there are other fiscally responsible options to choose. In my family, um, I like to call myself, uh, Fugel. My family has other names for it. But there are wise decisions that can be made fiscally that make sense. And I think other options, um, need to be considered before making a decision, so I'm urging you tonight to just pause on making a decision that will have long-term implications and cannot easily be undone. Specifically, I'm here to urge you not to proceed with cutting a music department staff position. I moved to this area not because of the quality of this, uh, school district, but when my husband and I moved to the area and then were about to buy a house, we had already learned about the reputation of this school district specifically academically and the music department. And, um, so we wanted to make sure that we were buying a house in this school district. Our superior music teachers and programs, in particular, are known far and wide even on the national stage. With abundant research in the last few decades on bio-psycho-social and brain development, it is clear that early life education is not about downloading information into filing cabinet-type brains for later retrieval. Thank you. But high-quality, engaging, innovative learning environments, including music programs, create opportunities for children to explore their natural abilities, interests, and talents, develop their personalities in safe places with freedom within clear boundaries, gain a love for lifelong learning, which happens when it's fun, stretch themselves beyond what they thought they could achieve, as we've heard, their social skills and conflict management skills that they will use throughout their lives, manage stress, anxiety, depression, find a welcome just as they are, and the list goes on. I work with seniors, and I can tell you firsthand the impact of music on the senior citizens that I work with who benefit in late in life from the early music education that they have had. You're at time, thank you for your time.
Jessica O'Brien.
Good evening, my name is Jessica O'Brien, and I'm a teacher at Spring Grove High School. I have taught health and physical education for twenty-three years in the Spring Grove Area School District. I am very proud to let others know how far our physical education has come in the past two to three decades and the amazing opportunities that the students have at Spring Grove High School. Since I've worked here in Spring Grove Ha- Area Schools District, we have lost an aquatics P E teacher, an intermediate school P E teacher, and a middle school P E teacher. When I was at the middle school and we went from three teachers to two teachers, I had over three hundred and thirty students on my teaching schedule. Do you know how difficult it is to build relationships and make meaningful impact on students' lives when you are dividing your attention between three hundred and thirty students? This is one of the reasons I chose to leave the middle school, and was fortunately had the opportunity to move up to the high school. When our elementary aquatics program was eliminated, I was disheartened by the large number of students who lacked the ability to swim and were actually terrified to get into the water when we taught them their water safety and swimming lessons in the pool at the high school. That being said, let me share with you some examples of the positive impact our elective P E classes have on our students. A male aquatics student, his little sister died because she drowned in the pool. He was not able to swim, and he took aquatics P E in the high school to honor his sister, overcome his fear of the water, and learned to swim, and he did. Nick, he and his mom told me at back-to-school night his senior year that the only class he must have on his schedule his senior year is fitness fusion. He loves the variety of class formats he experiences, and it's a great way for him to start his day and get motivated to do his schoolwork. Grace, Grace's dad shared that yoga P E was the first phys ed class that his daughter actually enjoyed. He said, "I think yoga could be really good as a daily practice for her to help with her anxiety," and he was correct. Abby. Abby's mother wrote, "Hi, Mrs. O'Brien, our daughter Abby is a freshman in your yoga class. Today at dinner, Abby was telling us a story about some advice she gave her friend. She said, 'If you put a bad apple in with good apples, the good apples go bad.' When we asked Abby where she got this analogy, she said it was something you shared in yoga class. Please don't stop sharing this kind of information, the kids are listening, at least mine is. Thank you for all that you do." Um, Natalie's dad informed me that his daughter didn't really like physical activity, but she finally started to because of fitness fusion. She attended a fitness class outside at Life and Balance Yoga Studio, she got a membership. And when she went off to college, she reached back out to me, and she asked for videos of her choreography that she created so she could share it with her college roommates. I would like to invite you, the board members, I've already invited multiple people on our administration to come in and take our physical education classes, observe them, see them, we would love to have you. Because all five of the P E teachers at the high school have a specialty area within our department, it would be detrimental to our students to move any one of us. We all target different populations of students with our areas of expertise. With a reduction in the number of teachers at the high school, we will lose elective opportunities for our students, and the number of classes offered to our students will be reduced. The students need these opportunities in their day so they can stay physically active and learn how to be healthy, productive members of society. Please reconsider your budget, thank you so much.
Hooray, um, Mindy Shear.
Hi, I'm Mindy Shear, Paradise Township. Hi, good evening, members of the school board. I'm here today to express my concern regarding the proposed budget cuts that threaten to impose limits on the exceptional educational opportunities offered at Spring Grove. Opportunities that embody our very motto, "Learning without limits." I urge you to reconsider these cuts and prioritize the long-term benefits these programs provide to our students and our community. I am particularly alarmed by the proposed elimination of Mr. Showalter's music position. While I understand the difficult financial decisions the board faces, the assertion that this elimination will have little impact on music education is simply inaccurate. Our eight dedicated music directors are already stretched thin, and eliminating this position will undeniably reduce their capacity to provide individual attention, restrict participation in band, orchestra, and chorus, and ultimately, it will erode the vibrant music culture that distinguishes our school. How can our students learn without limits when their access to musical expression is limited? Furthermore, I am deeply troubled by discussions surrounding cuts to STEM programs, specifically Odyssey of the Mind and Rocketry. These programs offer invaluable learning experiences that extend far beyond the traditional classroom. My son Logan is an eighth grader at the middle school, and he has personally thrived because of these programs. He has developed crucial teamwork, leadership, and problem-solving skills. Odyssey of the Mind and Rocketry empower students to embrace challenges, learn from setbacks, and persevere towards success. These are essential life skills that cannot be replicated in a classroom. These are the skills that will prepare our students for the challenges of the twenty-first century. Cutting these programs limits our children's potential and contradicts the very essence of learning without limits. Thank you. These programs are a source of pride for our community. When I share stories of Logan playing his cello at the state capitol and competing successfully in rocketry competitions against college students, it underscores the unique opportunities that Spring Grove provides. These experiences are what makes Spring Grove exceptional, and they are what make our children proud to be rockets. Restricting these opportunities limits their horizons. I recognize the board's responsibility to maintain a balanced budget. However, I implore you not to compromise our children's education by cutting essential staff and programs. Investing in our students is an investment in our future. Let us not silence the music, nor clip the wings of our budding scientists and engineers. Let us to continue, let us continue to provide the exceptional education that our school is known for, an education that truly embodies our motto, "Learning without limits." Thank you.
Maya Heller. Maya Heller. She left, okay. Moving on, Deanna Thatcher. Perfect, thank you. Jackson Lavalt.
Jackson Lavalt, North Cadore's Township. Um, I'm a former P E, P E teacher. Mr. Fortner and Mr. Ziegler inspired me to take P E in college. Um, I taught P E for two years in Maryland, and I didn't make it after two years. The extra duties I was asked to take on weekly, I was the, the bus guy outside, I directed traffic, lunch duties, hall duties, cover classes, some days my P E classes were cut, so I was teaching other things. Uh, it's a lot to take on when you're reallocating duties daily as people are in and out of sick, or just as whole positions. Uh, I'm a current fourth-grade special ed teacher, and my wife is also a fourth-grade teacher. As educators, we will educate. I'm staying up late to write an I P for tomorrow, and I'm here, I got my coffee, I'm ready to go. Uh, our money goes into our classrooms, our time, our effort, my sweat, my tears, her tears. We will do what we have to do because we're educators, it's in us, it's in our souls. But how long can we keep this pace? But how long can we keep this pace? As our EP season comes up, I don't know how much sleep I'm getting, three, four hours a night. I've got an eight-year-old son, an eight-month-old son and a four-year-old daughter. They will be rockets someday. I moved here, just like the other lady said, to be rockets. I'm passionate about this school, I'm passionate about this area, I want this school to be great. Are we going to be great if positions are reallocated and then other people are picking up the slack? Are they going to make it? I hope they do. Students, the other lady, the young person said, "Students need to find their place to fit in, and as you reallocate, will another place be left out for them to fit in? Are they going to have that place if it's no longer there?" And in closing, I wrote down my notes. Realocating a position might balance the budget, but how will it weigh on the other staff? Everybody else is involved, no matter which department, music, PE, yes, sir, support staff, everybody is affected when one person's out sick or when one person is no longer there. Godspeed, happy thoughts. Have a good evening. Thank you.
All right. I have Tori Potoff. Sorry if I'm butchering names. Tori, looks like P-O-T-T-O-F-F. Don't apologize, you're fine.
So, the kids are talking a lot about the music department and how much it impacts them. With the suicide at an all-time high, it seems to be, with what we've heard, that it would be foolish not to keep your strong music department. That seems to me has helped numerous students throughout the years. My oldest graduated last year, my youngest is currently a freshman. She is so excited to go to Disney in two years. As you can see, so am I. I don't want that opportunity taken from her because cuts have to be made. We also are talking about budgets. Not many people have brought up the maintenance building, unfortunately. That's, I know, a huge boon of contention for a lot of people. A lot of it is spoken behind closed doors. I know there's rumors that the current bus lot is supposedly being donated or given to you guys at rock-bottom prices because the bus company's not supposed to be allowed in there next year. Again, rumors, it'd be nice to know the truth from you guys. There's rumors floating all around this whole community, and we just want to know the truth. To what, to why? Why aren't we hearing from other, you know, people for this building? It's apparently one person that we're heard from. We just, we want to know the truth, and we're not being told it. Thank you.
And what municipality are you from? What municipality are you from? Thank you. Let me just double-check, but I think everybody who signed up did speak, so let me just review these. I'm just making, let me just double-check here. If you're not, it's totally fine, we can. Melissa Young. Got all the students, all right. And then I had number six, the last paper I have is Derek Henning, who said no. But that's okay, it might still be back there, so feel free to come up.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Brandon Huffnagle. I am resident of Jackson Township. Kids go to the school, alumni of the school district. First of all, music department phys ed, I heard something from cafeteria. Thank you for advocating for your staff and your students. That's very important. But board, I want to be clear that I understand the position the district's in. I know that the hard financial decisions have to be made. I know that there are funding gaps and rising costs that are real. But let's not confuse understanding by people in this community with agreement. And let's not allow tough circumstances to excuse the lack of transparency or community voice being allowed. This issue isn't just about the cuts. It's not about the tax increase. This issue is about transparency and the lack thereof. The community, the staff, and the students you serve deserve to be informed, engaged, and respected throughout this process. Decisions are being made behind closed doors, and by the time the public hears about them, the narrative is already written and the ink is dry. That's not how trust is built. That is not how trust is built under a new superintendent's leadership. Budgets just don't reflect numbers. They're reflecting the priorities of this school board. And when there's a lack of transparency, it leads to one thing, suspicion. Suspicion that priorities aren't being funded, and the priorities that are being funded are aligned with the needs of others, not the needs of our students, not the needs of our teachers, not the needs of our community. The educators in this school district are talking to me. They're tired of learning about these cuts and shifts through whispers in their hallways or having to dive through your budgets, which are in your stuff on your school board website that is very convoluted and hard to navigate. There are people that don't know how to click on the links and get things to open, yet that's what you say is transparent. The superintendent said, "It means something when people email or call." And while I appreciate that acknowledgement, I have to ask, why does it take us emailing or calling? Why weren't you asking for our input from day one? Why wasn't our school community, the people most impacted, actively involved in this process from day one? I'll yield the rest of my time.
All right. I believe that ends public comment. Before we go to board or administration comments, first I want to thank especially our students who spoke this evening. It takes a lot of courage to do that, and you all were so well-spoken. I know that I... And there's a lot of pride in what you spoke about, so thank you. I spoke at the beginning, so I am going to yield my time to the eight other board members to add those comments. I think we'll start, do you want to go this way? Ben?
I would like to reiterate and again, everybody, to the students that came out specifically, that stuff is always, I'm always impressed by how well our students are, how well they speak, and the courage that it takes to come out and do that. So, thank you to everybody, but specifically thank you to them. There's no denying that music plays a role in most people's life. You can't listen or watch a sporting event without them coming out to a song, without them having a pump-up song and all that stuff. So, I want to be clear about that part. That said, I would like to explain the mindset for me specifically. We haven't done anything but ask for some data and some information. And in one specific example that I have written down, Rachel talked about it at the beginning, she said... I'm sorry, I'm trying to figure out how to make this not... Okay, is that better? Okay, sorry about that. We asked our administration to bring us data so we could make some calculated decisions. And in the one example that we have, we have teachers in a department that are teaching three, four, five, six classes. And when we mathematically look at it and say, if each teacher can teach seven classes and there's more than seven openings in an apartment, are we able to not replace that position? Because those teachers didn't sign up to be on hall duty. And that was the premise beside or behind why we asked some of those questions. I'm not saying that that's in every department, every wing, or every area of the school, but that is the area where we looked to understand, are we doing the best job that we can with taxpayers' money? So, positions where people were not, where people were retiring were the ones that we specifically looked at to ask ourselves the question, are we doing this the best that we can? This board is quite regularly a five-four vote, but when it comes to eliminating programs or the erosion of students' education, that's not something that I've heard from anybody on this board or anybody from the administration. So, I want to be clear about why we asked the questions, because those are responsible questions to ask. It doesn't mean that we've done anything with that. You guys have been heard loud and clear, and I'll be honest, I wish people would come out for stuff like this more often when it's not tied to whether or not we're wearing masks, because that's the only other time that we would get groups of people to come out. So, some of those questions are not always things that people like to be asked, but I do believe that they're responsible. I want to touch on the comments about Odyssey of the Mind and Rocketry. Odyssey of the Mind and Rocketry, when we looked at the same programs, when we went down this road of trying to analyze and dive into our budget, we were looking for equality amongst programs. And having, as an example, one group where kids spend 28 bucks on a meal and the next where they're only allocated four is not right. All of those programs should be treated with some level of equity relative to what the program is. You need a pool to go swimming, you don't need a pool to throw disc golf, but there's some relativity in how we treat students and how to make sure that a program that goes out for three trips is treated similarly to another program that goes out for three trips, but shouldn't be treated the same as ones that go out for 10 trips. So, when we went into this budget, we went into the budget to try and understand, how can we have some standardization and some baseline for everything? Because when we looked at it, we found that it was not consistent from people that were previously at the district, and I'm not throwing stones, it's just we found that it was not consistent across everything. So, we love our music program. My son plays guitar. I couldn't imagine going to and from work each day without having music to get my head right. And like extracurriculars for me in school, I wouldn't have been a good student without it. So, without taking up everybody's time, I just want to drive that part home, that we ask questions about everything to be good stewards of taxpayers' money and trying to figure out how to uniquely find a balance between making sure that everybody's money that gets contributed is being used appropriately without limiting students' ability to learn and have extracurriculars is a really hard challenge to do, especially when you're up against how many years of uncontrollable increases. We serve our students, our staff, our community, our taxpayers, and that's not a singular or a one-dimensional person that we have to work with. As far as the transparency, I'm sorry, I don't understand where some of those comments come from. Some of the rumors and stuff that run around out online, we have buildings and grounds meetings. I'm the chair of buildings and grounds, and it's particularly frustrating for me on that topic when it comes to the Taj Mahal of a maintenance building that we're talking about. We have an ESC building that leaks water, doesn't have appropriate HVAC systems, and we have knowingly not spent money on so we could get rid of it. We have, for 15 years, spent hundreds of thousands of dollars per year on insurance for a YMCA building that went to nothing for education. When you look at the summation of all of the projects that we are trying to figure out how to do, we are dramatically reducing the budget that we are spending on buildings and grounds so we can put more money towards education. We have a building that we're looking at that is smaller than the footprint we currently use, and we figured out how to do things in a way that costs us less money. We don't have a price on that building. We have a concept, and the next time when we vote on that building, we're going to vote on a concept. And that concept gets us to the table with a team of engineers and people to help us design and understand what things we actually need and don't need, and look at how to continually erode that cost so we have a good place for our employees to be able to work, we have the ability to maintain our facilities and everything that happen, but we have to figure out how to do that the most cost-effective way possible. But we've not voted on anything or finalized anything yet. And it is a struggle to take that kind of time and have as many meetings as we do, and I get, I don't blame anybody else for not wanting to come to all of them because it's been 10 years of meetings to try and figure out how to drive those costs down. But we will, when we're done with those projects, spend substantially less than we are right now. And that part hasn't been made prevalent in the last year or two, and some of that is just because it's been talked about for 10 years. But that doesn't mean that we're not being open and transparent. Figuring out how to find a balance and understand why where most teachers teach six or seven classes, where there's opportunities when there's departments teaching three or four, that we can figure out how to make sure those students are with kids, I don't see that as a derogatory. And if people see that as a derogatory, then I'm happy to try and get some insight on why people feel that way. But I don't think there's anybody that is looking at the situation and trying to do anything that is a cut that's going to affect students. So... I'm wrapping up, I'm sorry. Thank you again to the students for coming out. I'm sorry I was long-winded, but I did want the explanation as to why we asked some of the questions and how we got to requesting the information to be heard, because it's not something that is exciting to try and have to look at that, but we do owe people that, for us to be responsible with the money.
Mr. Barshinger.
So, again, I'm going to parent everyone else. I very much appreciate seeing all of you here. I love seeing all of you here. I'm going to address the budget concerns and positions when we address the budget in our agenda. We're going to be talking about that this evening, so I'll talk about that then. But I do want to share something about the diversity statement. I'm disappointed in removal of all the connections to the diversity statement at Spring Grove. I was unaware that any part of the diversity statement was eliminated when we voted towards eliminating it from the comprehensive plan. I think it was Heather who read it out loud. I'm going to read it again. "I don't believe anything in our diversity statement is controversial. I don't think it's really connected to any sort of political view. I think it's solid because it is addressing just equality of our students." I'm going to reread it, it's very, very short. Says, "We will treat all people with equality, dignity, and respect. We will educate all students to understand, accept, and value all members of the world community, and we invite the community at large to join with us in support of this mission." That's what we voted on eliminating from the comp plan. And again, I was unaware that when we voted to eliminate that from the comp plan, that that was just a blanket removal from all of Spring Grove. I am curious which part of that statement that certain board members disagree with. Multiple community members have said through emails previously, they expressed the need to eliminate this statement because of our federal, because our federal government told us to, which I do find is interesting since I and many of these community members proclaim to be strong believers in keeping the federal government out of state and local issues. Furthermore, I did not appreciate that board members were blindsided during that last board meeting when we were asked to remove that diversity statement from the comp plan without prior warning. Allowing politics to take control of words like "diversity" is shame on us. Will national politics prevent my ability from saying someone's red in the face? Will national politics prevent my ability from saying someone's red in the face or I woke up? Or I want to make something great? We all need to put our petty polit- political differences aside and focus on the education and well-being of our students.
Mr. Stone.
First, I want to thank the community for taking the time to prepare and address the school directors about your concerns about our proposed instructional impact cuts and how they will affect students. I am very concerned about these possible cuts. I am concerned about Spring Grove's deficit budgeting. The fact that our district has drawn down its general fund or rainy day savings over the last decade has also reduced the district's bond rating, which now raises the cost of borrowing money. Spring Grove should not continue to approve budgets with deficit spending as was done last year for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget with expenses exceeding revenue by three point eight million dollars. I believe it is in the best interest for the community to support Spring Grove's students. I personally feel that public education is a great equalizer. It gives children a much better chance to succeed regardless of their social, economic backgrounds or family situations. Spring Grove Area School District is providing great learning opportunities for our students, but many of these programs will be affected if instructional budget cuts are approved. Visiting classrooms is something I feel school board members should do to help understand and appreciate what is happening in the schools. From the past and recent visits, I have experienced many different ways that students learn in Spring Grove. Last month, I spent part of five days visiting various classrooms throughout the district to educate myself about what is actually happening in the classrooms. There is not enough time to talk about all this student learning I saw during my visit, but let me share a few examples. It was amazing to see kindergartners help create basic data and then create a bar graph with a teacher projected and discussed on the screen while it was being built by the students. In first grade, students were working, another first grade class, students were working independently with iXL reading program on their iPads with, with the teacher input adjusting for different reading levels. And this allowed the teacher to simultaneously work closely with a small reading group at the table. I visited a third grade ELA class. It was great seeing how interested students were and how they responded to different ways alliteration is used in poetry and stories during discussions. I got to observe the energy of an elementary gym class. It was exciting to see the students learn the steps and rhythm of a work, big dancing for part of the class. The teacher provided instruction and inspiration for the students to become physically active in all different ways. At Spring Grove Intermediate School, I observed a STEAM class. STEAM education is an approach to learning that uses science, technology, engineering, and the arts and mathematics to assess points for guiding student inquiry, dialogue, and critical thinking. The students were using all types of thinking skills to open combination locks on boxes. In a sixth grade class, I observed students discussing and identifying parts of speech and participate in sentence diagramming. Later, I observed a review of how and why scientific notation works in math. The students were actively engaged doing activities and discussions about scientific notation. In a middle school science class, it was interesting seeing the students learn and organize ecological levels in different ways. In a class on's activity afterwards, the students were given different ecology placards and then organized themselves throughout the classroom to show what they learned. I observed a sixth grade algebra honors class that used both technology and old-fashioned paper and pencil to teach students about absolute values and equations. The paper and pencil gave students practical, hands-on experience. And the iPad technology allowed the students to quickly graph equations to see the differences in the absolute values of different equations. Finally, I got to witness school spirit when I attended a middle school pep rally. I enjoyed hearing the orchestra play and the chorus sing. Many students were recognized for different sports and extracurricular activities during the pep rally. The students and teachers got involved in different competitions on the gym floor. The pep rally accomplished its goal of building school spirit, especially when they chanted, "We are Spring Grove." Hopefully, my remarks gave you some insight into the various ways students are learning in Spring Grove. I appreciated the warm welcome and thank yous that each of my visits, uh, came, came. I value the Spring Grove administration, staff, volunteers, and community support that makes Spring Grove a great school district. I ask the administration to advocate for our students and look for ways to keep Spring Grove's educational programs rather than recommend cuts that will negatively impact our students. I also appreciate, appreciate the efforts of many past school board directors who worked to make Spring Grove an excellent school district. The dedication of school board members to provide our students with strong educational program takes our commitment to stand up for today's students. They are the future of the Spring Grove community.
Mrs. Wilson.
Hi, thanks, thanks everybody for coming. Really appreciate it. I did not prepare anything because I was really interested in hearing what you all had to say. So, uh, very much appreciate everyone coming out, um, especially the students. I loved, a, a few of you had suits on. I thought that was awesome. Um, so very much appreciate your preparation and we, we always, I think from, um, everything that I've heard, we hear you loud and clear. Part of what we do is very, very difficult, right? So, we want, we want to give as many programs, we want to be as robust as we possibly can be, um, in these programs to best serve our students. Unfortunately, we also have the, um, position to balance a budget, right? So, we all have to stay within our means and that's what we are looking to do. That's what we're asking our administration to do. And I will say with the recent changes, for me sitting on the board, um, this administration has given us so much more information than we have had seen in the past. So, I really appreciate it. Joe, Steve, they're working tireless, tirelessly. And what I will say is the nine of us, um, we all work tirelessly. We all have full-time, well, most of us have full-time jobs as well. Um, I got involved in this because I have two, what used to be two children in the district. Now I have one child in the district. But I'm very personally, um, I, I personally want to see this school district succeed. And I, for one, am very proud of what we do here and we want to continue to do that, right? So, that is what we on the board are looking to do. Um, so we have the students in mind. Um, and just want you to understand that that is, you know, the thought process for all nine of us. We may all have differences of opinions, but we all want the best for our students. So, thanks again for coming. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit bothered by the lack of transparency, um, conversation, comment. Um, I love social media, right? I think we all do. Um, I think that it can be used for really, really good things. And I think it can be used for really, really not so good things. So, I would encourage you, all of our meetings are public. We have, Suzanne is over here typing like crazy. We have meet, we have minutes to every single meeting. Um, all of our meetings are public as well. Most of our meetings are public besides the executive sessions. But we do buildings and grounds, so we work through committees. They are also, um, open to the public, so I encourage you all to get involved. If there are specific questions or specific rumors that you speak of, please reach out and we can, we can help you with those rumors. So, I, I don't like, uh, that thought process. And I really feel like we've done a great job in the four years that I've been on the board to increase that transparency. So, if you're not feeling that, then, um, we need you to reach out. We need you to be, to be involved as well. So, um, if we, if, if you don't reach out, we don't know, right? So, I, I really appreciate everybody coming tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. White.
First of all, thank you for all the students coming out. Absolutely love a big crowd. What's more exciting is you're passionate and you're fighting for what you believe in. That's what's important. Uh, fourteen years serving on this board, I would get so upset because who would come out? No one for educational purposes. So, you know, if you were worried about Johnny or Suzie, how they're doing, you, you would never know because no parents would ever show up. But if it was a sporting event and that parent disliked that coach, it's standing room only. So, it just befuddled me through the years, but I'm so glad all of yous came out. So, let me ask you a question and we'll make this real quick as I move on. How many, uh, and just raise your hands. How, how many work in the private sector? Just raise your hands. Raise them high. Don't be shy. And the rest are all students or educators that are here, right? So, if you work in a private sector, as I do and majority of us on this board do, you have three things that will kill a business: payroll, benefits, and a mortgage, correct? How many are shaking their head? Yes. And the difference is you have a P and L. Uh, uh, anyone know what a P and L is? Profit, loss, rate of them? And what happens if they're bad through the years? You restructure, correct? So, you're back to budgeting. Well, it's kind of the same way as what a school board does and what a school does. And what you have to do is restructure. So, when we asked the administration to put some stuff together and believe it or not, in all the years sitting here, we have received more information than we have ever, ever received. So, if we have any typing lawyers out there, make sure you get that correct. So, you have to restructure your departments. And that's what we're doing. We're looking at the PE, the STEM, the music, the clubs, the rockets. All, all the departments we're just looking at, but we, no one said we're making any cuts. So, just be clear on that. But this is how rumors get started. And then all of yous become so passionate of what you're doing, you show up to discuss and show your enthusiasm for what the school is meaning to you. We are here for these students. I'm here for the students. I have a wife that works in this district that many of you know. I have a son that teaches in this district. Went to Spring Grove, came back to taught. I am very proud to be in this district. I am proud to be able to serve. I'm your voice. You vote for me every four years if I elect to run. Some like me, some don't. As I said, I'm like Howard Stern. You hate the guy, but you turn it on to listen to him every day, see just what he says. But on that note, I just want to be clear. Write that down too. Again, we are all volunteers. We put a lot of time and effort in here. But the main important thing is we are here for you, the students, the teachers, the staff, the support staff. If I remember, we just passed, what, three hundred thousand, thousand dollars to get math books in the hands to make consistency. And we're going to continue to do that. So, if you think the board does not care about the students or the education, you're dead wrong. Unfortunately, this is the bad part. Through previous superintendents, like anything else, who gets what? Shoved down the hill. That's what happened to us. Every time, we have a lot of things to discuss and go over, we're talking about five, ten, fifteen years in the making, which is ridiculous. Money that is taxpayers is being spent, which shouldn't happen, period. We should be able to come and make a decision. But we are getting so wrapped up in buildings and grounds, as Ben had said, where sometimes we lose the focus of what's important and that is what you're all here for in this room: education. So, just keep that in mind. We are here for you. There are decisions that have to be made. And unfortunately, this year, we are being more enlightened with information that's coming out than we have ever seen before. So, just keep that in mind. We're not cutting anything. We're not throwing anything out. We're just looking at everything. We're restructuring. So, again, thank you all for coming out. I truly, truly appreciate it. And I hope to see this many at our next board meetings too.
Rodney.
That's gotta be a hard act, act to follow, but I'll put, I'll make it short and sweet. I too, uh, since I, I've only been on this board for three years and I can tell you one thing, the first three years were miserable. We did not get any information. We were voting on budgets. We had no idea what was in them budgets at all. And then things would come up in front of us, you know, four and five hundred thousand dollar items. And we'd say where we're getting the money from and the next thing you know, it's already in the budget. I didn't know what was in that budget. So, when we started asking questions and asking for information and we got this stuff here, we were excited about it. But again, we're not here to take education away because the most exciting thing I did since I've been on this board was the other, uh, meeting when we voted for them textbooks getting in kids' hands. There, there's nothing more exciting than to hear that. And, uh, I, again, I will push hard for, to the rest of them, for the rest of time out in here, as long as it's gonna be. And, uh, I agree too. Transparency, if you, you talk about not being transparent, we voted on many things here and some of them were teachers. Gotten rid of teachers, consumer science. We eliminated consumer science in a stroke that we didn't even know that was happening. So, you think you didn't have transparency, we didn't have it and we have it now. So, we're looking at everything. We're here to, here to serve you people. But I'm also here to serve the people that are on fixed incomes and older people such as myself. I don't want to see a tax increase every, think in a couple of years, you know? I'm, I'm, I pay, and this is, I, I'm not here crying, but it costs me for what I, and seven hundred dollars a month to pay school taxes. That's a lot more than my mortgage ever was when I bought that farm. So, that's all I'm looking for. But will I sacrifice education over money? Never. I'll guarantee you it will not. It will not be. So, I do appreciate yous coming out. I hope from now on, I've, I've heard situations in the past with teachers had issues and stuff. I hope they can get that many people to come out and, and advocate for them when it comes to special correcting and things that, uh, that need more support. So, appreciate yous. Thank you.
Mrs. Baum.
All right, this is even gonna be shorter, Rodney. Uh, it's, it's nine oh nine. All right. Thank you to everyone who came out. Thank you to all of those people who have sent us letters. I've read them. I've printed them out and I've read them again and I will keep them. Um, especially to our students. Your ELA teachers would be very proud of you tonight. I think that it speaks volumes about our education, okay? Somewhere, somewhere along the line, you've been taught how to do public speaking, how to express yourself and to, um, be, you know, be yourself. And I thank you for that. Um, many of you know that I'm married to a former music teacher, um, who retired in twenty twelve and was not replaced. So, I can see from this vantage point how it's become thinner and thinner and thinner that we can almost see through the music department because it's so thin. Um, just to follow up with Dr., with Dr. Bradley talked about with the cyber charter school. I've reached out to my legislator and to my state senator expressing concerns about the amount of money that we as a board and you as taxpayers, um, spend for the charter schools and the cyber schools. And what bothers me the most is how they can use their money in a different way than we can use ours. Things that they spend their money on, bonuses. Um, I, I, I just won't even get into all of it.
Each, each family gets their, um, internet service paid for. We can't, we can't do that for you. We, we just physically cannot, we, we economically cannot do that for you. But your taxpayer money is going towards cyber, uh, school attendees to get their home internet service paid for, for the entire family. Obviously, the child accesses that, uh, internet service for their online school, but.
And, and.
I need to take Mrs. Bodge to help myself.
That's right. And it just amazes me that they have all these buildings and they buy all this land for online learning. I don't understand. Um, just the last thing is, I'm afraid that our motto of learning without limits is turning into limiting our students' learning. And I think we, as a board, need to pay attention and we need to keep pushing like we did with the math program, um, the academic part, and I. And I think with our student athletes, that's another important part. I just had a conversation with a PE teacher about something we can do to recognize those students. So it's up to you now. You're next.
I'll show you short and sweet, Mrs. Bone. I'm not a public speaker, but I congratulate the students that did do that. Did a very nice job. I appreciate you all coming out. I do care about a lot of our citizens. That, you know, I come from an industry where we don't get raises every year. Some years my boss gets a D raise when the markets are down. And, you know, their tax money matters to me, but so does the education of our students. And I'll be honest with you, I lose sleep over tax time with the budget. And I'm just gonna be as fair as I can be to everybody. And our students are my priority. And I want to see them succeed. And yeah, that's about it. To you, Rachel.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Again, I was gonna talk about this at planning, but I just feel like this is the perfect time to say this because of Mr. Barshinger's comments about the diversity statement being removed. I've lost sleep over ideas of what that can evolve into. And the statement that constantly goes in my mind is the Rocket Promise. And I would like to put that on our administration to either form a CAC or, you know, if it starts with the board of recreating what we believe in as an educational community and what our students believe in and what that means from K to 12. Again, I'm throwing out the Rocket Promise because that's the thing that's keeping me up at night. And I think that we need something like that in our district. It can be named something else. But I would really like to put that on our administration to take the next steps of forming that and formally evolving the diversity statement into something even better for our students and staff. And again, just my closing thoughts. Again, thank you to all that came out, especially our students. We are gonna move into our action items. So again, students, I know it's 10:59, I almost say 10:15. If you need to depart, please do so. We know that tomorrow is a school day, same with our staff. Yeah. And we're gonna take a five-minute break.
Oh, there's a lot, right? Thank you, everyone. I believe you previously got my report. So I just wanted to highlight three things. So the first thing I wanted to highlight was a district-wide implementation goal of trauma-informed care training, which we started implementing in July of 2024. We connected with Dr. Stephanie DePalmer and Cara Voichek of Mind and Heart Wellness. We provided training in the summer of 2024 to our secretarial staff, our educators, aides, administration. And then continued that training for our teachers and other staff members throughout the remaining year. We got a lot of great feedback from our staff and support staff and teachers and other staff about the trauma-informed care training. We also put out a monthly video series for parents. I paired with Stephanie Kennedy for that piece. And then a monthly video series for teachers was released to them. So they either look at those videos, which continue to kind of go over those things we learned in that very important training through the remaining of the school year. The second thing I wanted to highlight was in conjunction with William Stiles, we worked with Chrysler for our bus drivers and all of our staff to implement Alice training. We have a great team of trainers here made up of our administration. And we have been training staff since the summer of 2024. We're hoping to wrap that up. Right now, we have outstanding, we have 65 people outstanding. Only 16 teaching staff outstanding, 25 coaches, and 24 LIU staff that we need to catch up with. So we're pretty pleased about that and that we were able to kind of implement that training. It kind of goes hand in hand with the trauma-informed care as Alice utilizes those same principles. If you recall, you guys gave us permission to move forwards with the Alice training, which is different from our previous safety training. And we'll be reviewing that in more detail at a session in May. And lastly, I wanted to highlight our school counseling department. They took on a big task in training everyone to transition from Naviance to Smart Futures in order to make sure we could keep up with our career, education, and work standards that we are tasked with doing K to 12. And so we were very pleased. We appreciate the help of the district technology department and the partnership there. And we successfully implemented that program. It was a little rough there in the beginning, but we made it. And we're very pleased with the results. I think the students really liked the new platform. We're hearing it's easier to access and that they feel like they're getting a lot out of it. So I appreciate your support for that. And lastly, if you'll indulge me, I'd like to say thank you to all of you, to our SG community and our community at large, our department, our mental health department, our mental health team. We suffered a great loss in January with the passing of Carrie Schmoyer. I don't think we could have continued to support everyone without our K to 12 staff here in Spring Grove's encouragement and love and kindness. Also, our community at large, we had people reach out, offer their service. Southern York County schools came, their mental health team came and provided that support to our students. We had our staff also had support. And so I just want to say a thank you on behalf of them. But also, I want to thank them, our mental health team, because they're just incredible people that went through a very hard time. And they've continued to move forward in providing our students with what they need without missing a beat. I want to thank Kelly Bortner, who's supposed to be retired, but I may come in to work three days a week now, to help us to support our time. Former school counselor Rocket from, at the time she was little, in helping us kind of cover Carrie's spot until we're able to fill that. And then just everyone who's just pivoted to continue to help support on those days when she's not available to make sure our students get what they need every single day. So that's my report. If you have any questions, I'd be open to answering them. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Board committee reports are as listed and for information only. Correspondence, I do not have anything at this time. Moving on to our action voting items, budget and finance with Mr. White.
Go on. Well, then, we have plenty of space here. You can show up. Approval for the proposed general fund budget, 2526 fiscal year with total revenue of $86 million, total expenditures of $86, with a shortfall of $14,076 to be funded from the general fund unreserved fund. Balance is setting the real estate knowledge rate at 25.1259 mils, an increase of .6725 mils. The knowledge rate of 24.4535. In addition, earned income tax of half percent and real estate transfer tax, half percent under Act 511. B, 2526 final budget notice. Approval of the attached final budget notice, which gives notification to the public that the 2526 proposed final budget for the general fund is available for public inspection. State intention to present the adoption of the final budget at the May 19th, 25 school board meeting, allowing the amendments before final adoption. C, 2526 proposed final budget resolution. Approval of the attached resolution authorizing 2526 proposed final budget display and advertising supporting the final budget notice. So moves budget and finance.
Mr. White, on letter A, can you confirm the mils that you stated? Just for accuracy, please.
The mils?
The .6, that number, please.
So the rate at 25.1259 mils, an increase of .6724 mils from the knowledge rate of 24.4535.
Thank you. Second, any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to. With the loss of a music teacher, we're now being informed that band and orchestra programs at the elementary school will be eliminated. Is this a significant loss for students' educational experience and access to the arts? The proposed elimination of the high school principal position is also troubling to me. This position is essential, it sounds like, in maintaining strong relationships with local businesses, which often provide valuable employment opportunities for our graduates who do not pursue college. As for reducing our spending, district departments have already been asked to make various cuts. Meanwhile, we are continuing to defer a long list of necessary items with no clear plan for how or when these issues will be addressed in the future. In addition, the board has not received information about any upcoming large expenses relating to improving education and student well-being. Although we approved funding a K to 5 math program, it is likely we'll need additional resources to support areas of weakness across our K to 12 curriculum. And at this point, we have no insight into what those needs may be and what they may cost next year and years prior and years after. Furthermore, over the last five years, the board has approved multiple budgets with 0% tax increases. And during that same period, inflation has risen by 23%, according to national CPI data, significantly increasing the cost of utilities, materials, and other district expenses. Without corresponding increases in revenue and high inflation costs, they do not seem to be disappearing anytime soon. Given all of this, I believe it would be short-sighted to approve these cuts, vote on this budget, or settle on a specific tax increase without a more comprehensive and sustainable financial plan.
I have a question. The first statement about the removing elementary band, and then also the cuts. I don't think we received any cut information to approve. I just want to make sure where you're getting your information and I'm getting my information, we find a way to the middle.
Sure. I did meet with Steve and Joe a couple of days ago and asking about how things would be impacted. And in those conversations, it sounded as if that was very much on the table. I then emailed Joe yesterday or today about would we, if we made this cut, is there certainty that there would be orchestra and band in the elementary schools? And at that time in the email, the response we received was music wouldn't disappear at the elementary schools, but orchestra and band, there was no guarantee that those were going to remain. Unless I misunderstood the email, that's how it read.
If you give me a second, I can find the exact language that I used. It was a conversation between me and you, but I'll be more than happy to share it with the world. Give me a second. Yeah, sure. To the board.
All right. And Mr. Barshinger, if you don't mind, I do want to answer, Mr. Shear. No, we are, this is not the final budget. So as it reads in the resolution, the final budget will be presented May 19th, 2025. This is the proposed This is the proposed final budget. So this is part of the budgeting process where tonight, we're going to propose a final budget. It'll be placed out for public review for thirty days as part of the process that I explained. So this is not the final budget. We'll have at least two more meetings. We'll have a budget and finance meeting, and we'll have a director study form in May. So this is not the final budget. This is the proposed final, just part of the process.
So I, and I understand that, but we've, and I think Rodney can agree with me, that there have been multiple discussions where we continue to say, yep, this is just a tentative one. Yes, we'll say yes to this. That's okay, you can change it later. Okay, this one's just a proposed, and it's not just for the budget, but it's for lots of decisions we make. And then we get to the point where it's the final budget, then we ask a bunch of questions, and we're told, we agreed to this everywhere along the way, and now we don't have really time to address the issues. That's my concern, is if we continue to move forward with this, that we're going to run out of time for all of us to ask questions and get our concerns.
Thank you. And I was...
We've done this every year.
This is part of, this is part of the PDE process, so.
It's required.
Yes, it is required.
Just to clarify, if we go with this mileage, we can't increase it the next time, is that correct?
No, you're incorrect. We can, we can make any changes from now until, like, it'll go on to public display for thirty days. We will have at least two more meetings. We'll have a budget and finance meeting, and we'll also have a director study form at the May, May nineteenth is the final budget, but there's two weeks prior to that, we'll have a director study form, I'm sorry, May fifth, thanks, Mr. Ritz. May fifth, we'll have a director study form, we'll present again, and we'll present information from that budget and finance committee meeting. So you will have two more opportunity to basically dig into the weeds to formulate whatever, whatever final budget you want. The final budget will be presented and we'll be looking for approval on May nineteenth. At that time, you can make any recommendations as far as what you're doing here as this discussion tonight. You can direct us to put in whatever number you want. Sometimes we've presented two, three, four budgets on that, or two or three, four budget options on that evening of the final budget. Does that make it clear?
So Eric, Mr. Barshinger, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to find. The question posed to Dr. Guanini and myself, it was Saturday. Can either of you verify that band and orchestra in the elementary schools will still exist with the loss of a music teacher? And I was at a, I was at an event and took some time to digest, and my response was, yes, they both can exist. The question is, what is an acceptable level of pull-out sectional instrumental lessons? And how much, if any, rehearsal time after school for the stipend is the person willing to put in with some parent pickup required? So right now, we try to have everything going today to make it as convenient as we can for our families. That includes pulling students out of the ELA in math at the elementary levels to go get sectionals, which at times can be one to eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve students. I don't have that exact number. I've seen them at one, I've seen them at eight, in my experience here in the short time I've been here, sectionals. And that's not a great depth of knowledge. So they can still exist. Also, you know, we received department input about third grade and the appropriateness of fine motor skills, and the amount of, the amount that students put in at home in that third grade level is also something up for debate. If I'm a parent and I really am on top of my child, say, hey, you got to practice survival tonight, we're going to get more. If not, the child might not have that much capacity at third grade with their development of their brain to put that in. So the sectional lessons for small groups and individuals will look different next year if we go in that route. So we've asked for the people in the trenches, the department, you know, the department leaders to put, to work with us on that. How can we move people around? How can we best have less travel for those people during one day? For example, if one teacher is traveling twice in a day, that's not the best use of their time. We want them to go to one building as much as they can, put time in there, and then another building. Right now, the district, for the most part, has two dedicated teachers providing lessons, providing sectional lessons that they pull students out of their ELA or the math class, and they provide those lessons. So, you know, that's the value the district has put in. We will support that. It may be social studies and science. Yeah, less social studies depending on the level, but yeah, correct. It could be before core classes that are getting pulled out of to take individual lessons as opposed to students that have piano lessons after school that their parents pay for. So, correct.
So Tom, I'm going to try to repeat back to you what you had said, and you tell me if I'm right. I asked, will they exist? And your response was, they can exist.
Yes, they both can exist.
That's different than, that's different than will. So can is implying that it's possible, that they could exist in some way, but you've also been qualified it. You've qualified it. But then throughout it, you said it's going to possibly look different.
Correct.
But we don't know what that will look like.
Correct. You've asked for input from the actual department.
A lot of hypotheticals. And so that right there is my concern. If it is only, you know, only if students are willing or parents are willing to pick up kids after school, they can then be possibly involved with band or orchestra, and then it was, that was an idea.
Part of it, yeah.
I think part of it is with the department right now to try and help figure out. So there are a lot of hypotheticals because we're...
And we talked about this, with all due respect, we said we would not have this answer for you by Monday, like, today's Monday, and we said, we're working on it, and you're asking, a lot of hypotheticals, you're a hundred percent right, because we don't have it all figured out yet, so.
And so that, and that to me is the concern, is I am, I am happy to approve, or at least discuss, I can say. The, but right now, in the current budget, it's stating that there is no music teacher being replaced, or being replaced, and that's my concern, is that we tentatively say, yep, we're not going to replace the music teacher, which may end up losing band and orchestra at the elementary schools, when we were told initially that there was not going to be any academic hit for our kids and the programs overtaken from the kids.
Sure. The pre-preliminary budget has the staffing levels that was, that were discussed, you know, with that reduction. And so that whenever this is quoted online or in social media, we would be asking potentially some rehearsal time for ensembles to occur after school. Right now, there is precious few of that at that level. We have events, and we go to concerts, and they're great. We're asking, and I realize that would be a lift for parents, but I want to be crystal clear, your child would still be pulled out of science, they would still be pulled out of English to have their individual lesson. It may look different, or instead of one day every six-day cycle, it may be one day every, a little bit longer. So it would still, still occur. So, so that, we have yet to determine what that would look like. You know, I know when I travel to high school and I go into the rehearsal rooms, we see many students taking advantage of those rehearsal rooms because of the maturity level, they don't need to have a teacher there with them, so they take advantage of those rehearsal rooms. So that would happen.
And I'm going to keep beating this horse.
Anyway.
The, part of the concern was that this maize and cans also in the email said, well, some third graders really might not have the faculties to be able to play instruments, and that to me also, that to me communicates, we probably, like, maybe we shouldn't be having those, you know, having orchestra or bands in third grade. And so that's an elimination of a program that currently exists. And so I'm not, so I give it to you that there's something could possibly exist. I just have no idea, and it doesn't really sound like we have a real idea of what that will look like. And that's a concern to me if we move forward with...
The con version is we change nothing, we change nothing, and we, we ask the whole entire community of Spring Grove to pay for lessons for individual students getting pulled out of their English, math, science, and social studies classes, so that they can, they can do that. And we choose one arts, we choose music arts, and not other fine arts, not the visual arts, not photographic arts. We don't pull students out of science, math, history, or social studies for sculpture. We don't pull them out of science, history, math, social studies for photography. We pull them out for, for music.
So are we now advocating for sports to be eliminated so that we, I mean, they can pay to join sports teams, but we're allowing kids to leave school to participate in public sports? So if...
For the events?
Yeah.
For the actual events?
Right.
At the secondary level, if because of, because of weather and because of daylight, students move, and because of travel, they leave school early.
You just said, you were arguing one of the reasons why, like, hey, this is kind of, maybe it's a poor use of our time, parents could be paying for private lessons instead of getting some lessons in school, and I...
I think we do, I think some of us do.
I do as well.
I do, yeah.
And just like some sports parents pay for their kid to be in a traveling program, but they're also in the public, freely provided program, but there are paid programs available. And so I'm just saying, like...
If we don't pull, if we don't pull kids out of class for, for practice.
We do pull sports out of classes to...
Absolutely do not.
Sports, sports programs.
We absolutely do not pull them out for practice. We have, we absolutely do not.
Do they not leave for games?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Because of travel and because of daylight. I'm just arguing about that's the...
Sure. I think that, like, an orchestra event, Pigeon Hill, you know, Pigeon Hill event, they're out for the full day. My daughter participated in it.
Correct.
They're...
Excuse that.
Saying, you know, we're, we're getting a little ticky, tacky, which I appreciate sometimes. We have gone down this road many times. So ultimately, what I'm hearing is we do not have a clear vision of what we're doing yet. I don't, because we have, not one person on this board has said, we are cutting a music position. That has not, that has not happened. So I want to be very clear, we did not say we're cutting a PE position, we did not say we are cutting a music position. We have to figure out the budget to determine what we're going to do. So I feel like we're, all of us are, are probably putting the cart before the horse, but we're thinking proactively, and I applaud that. So if we need, so if, again, we have until May nineteenth to figure this out, all of us, and we need to kind of pull up our sleeves and get to a place where, if we don't want to eliminate positions, we need to figure this budget out. So, and it's not going to be easy. We have to, all nine of us, dig deep and figure this out if we do not want to cut or eliminate positions.
That's correct.
Rachel, I had a question about the May nineteenth date. Is that set in stone, or could we have a special meeting after that? I know by law, we have to have it by the end of June, so I think we have some time to gather this information and digest it and make a good decision.
Mark, I'm going to give that to you.
Correct. We have until June thirtieth to submit the budget. I would ask that, we don't wait until June thirtieth, but, but, correct, to answer, to answer your question, Mrs. Baum, yes, we, we can, if you want to push that date past the May nineteenth, we can hold a, another meeting for, for the budget, yes.
I'm almost thinking, because of what we do for the budget, where we say, this percentage equals this month's tax increase per one-hundred-thousand-dollar home. If we could, again, I'm one of nine, but I think it would be helpful to me to say, if we do a two percent budget, here's what that looks like. If we did a five percent tax increase, here's what that looks like. I know you guys, again, I cannot thank our administration enough for giving us the data in the ways that we have asked because we all see things differently. I just think that might be beneficial for what Mr. Barshinger is saying. You know, if we're going to do a three percent tax increase, here are the recommendations. If, due to the, but is that based on the tax increase? Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, so we did present you multiple, you know, tax increases, correct? And what I would recommend, what I would recommend tonight is that we continue to move forward with, with the proposed general fund budget. As I mentioned, we still have at least two, and if we push this back, we could have even three, if not more meetings. We're, you know, Mr. Lepo and myself are more than willing to have those budget meetings to discuss this. We also have multiple resignations that haven't been put into, you haven't approved them yet, so there's a lot of changes. This, this budget is very fluid, and I would suggest that we continue to discuss this and get into the weeds in our next couple of meetings.
Any other discussion on budget and finance? Just a reminder, letter A, we have time. This is just the proposed final budget. Roll call vote on budget and finance. Are we? All right. Moving on to buildings and grounds with Mr. Ramsey.
So B, C, and D, as it pertains to the gates at the school and some information about the roads, we are going to table that for the next meeting. It has on here about two gates, and we had talked about one, and I want to make sure that the numbers and the accuracy of it in its entirety is correct. So we're going to move, we're just going to...
So we're going to move, we're just going to move forward with A. Buildings and grounds, board action requested. Building permit agreement, acknowledgement of and consent to the agreement for Jackson Township to issue a building permit to the YMCA to commence building renovations to condominium units jointly owned by the district and the YMCA. Located at 1480 Roth Church Road in advance of township receiving the necessary land development plan in accordance with township ordinances. So moved on buildings and grounds.
Any discussion? D, B, C, and D are not being talked about. Yep, just A.
Mr. Stone, you had said about the different steps with it, and I want to make sure it's organized correct.
Any discussion? Roll call vote. Yep, yep, sorry.
It does not have anything to do with those gates. When we looked at D and we talked about the breakout of some of the individual components, um, this is not exactly what I had in mind or what I felt like I expressed to people. So I just want to make sure that that structure and the individual components are lined up. It's not going to hold up the approval of the master plan. And making sure that it's broken out into the individual pieces was something that everybody seemed to agree on, and I wanted to make sure we got it done that way.
D, the reason we're, is holding up the building permit for the YMCA. They can't get the, they can't get the land development plan, is that why? No?
No, they just, they... Basically, Jackson Township's procedure is that the land development plan has to be passed. So they would like to get the renovation started earlier. So they would not, uh, Jackson Township will not issue a building permit to them. So that's what this is asking for.
Right, and I'm saying that...
D has nothing to do with that.
Okay. They're not tied together.
We can do D when we do the maintenance building simultaneously, because they're both part of the master plan. We didn't have the one on here, so we're just going to merge them.
Okay. Roll call vote, buildings and grounds. Your sign.
Personnel, board actions requested. Item A, resignations, acceptance of the following resignations as listed. Item B, uncompensated leave, approval of following request. Item one, Nadia Nell, ESL teacher. Item C, teacher substitutes, approval of following as listed. Item D, Act 86, day-to-day student substitute, approval of the following. Item one, Taryn Bronski. Uh, item E, classified substitutes, approval of the following as listed. So moved on personnel.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call vote on personnel. Yes, moving on to curriculum with Mr. Barshinger.
Curriculum board actions requested. A, amended grade 2025-2026 for an exchange student. Um, amend the enrollment grade for Helen Heimberg from Germany to move from 10th grade to 11th grade for the 2025-2026 school year. And B, 2025-2026 for an exchange student approval to allow Maria Eduarda Tedesco of Brazil as an international foreign exchange student and to enroll them at Spring Bravary School District as the high school 11th grade student for the 2025-2026 school year. So move curriculum.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call vote on curriculum.
White?
Yeah.
Yes. Will stand? Yes. Here, signed?
Yeah.
Barshinger?
Yeah.
Ramsey? Baum?
Yeah.
Or...
Yes. Motion to adjourn the action voting meeting. Second on favor. All right, call to order the director's study forum. Anyone in the audience that would like to address the board at this time? All right, seeing none. Uh, moving into business and finance, budget and finance reports with Mr. White.
Nothing in addition. You have the memo in front of you.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, buildings and grounds with Mr. Ramsey. Thank you.
I believe we are going to turn it over to Mr. Mercado. And we're going to talk about some of the things that we have here in front of us, talking to us about the, um, building projects.
So as, um, as, um, the gentleman, if I can have your attention. So as the gentleman come forward, I do just want to remind everyone, just a little bit of background. Uh, if you were at the, um, Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting when we first introduced, um, the concept of KPN Gordian. So what I do, wanted to let everybody know that, um, the Keystone Purchasing Network, it's a cooperative purchasing program. It allows public school districts to, and other government agencies to competitively bid contracts through products and services like we're going to talk about tonight. Low bar is part of that KPN, um, procurement process. Uh, it ensures compliance with all state and federal regulations. We went over that in detail at the, um, Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting. And Spring Bravary School District is part of the Keystone Purchasing Network. Um, why would we use the Keystone Public, uh, Network? Time savings, cost efficiency, compliance, wide selection of vendors, as you have here tonight. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jesse and to Bill.
No, I think this is the maintenance part.
Which one do we know starts to be this?
Well, on the agenda, on the agenda, Van, it says proposed maintenance building. Yes, so I think that's the portion that we're going to cover here.
Can you turn?
Can you guys turn the mic or...
I'm on it.
Thank you.
It's on.
Okay.
There was another one he handed out. I gave you that.
Yeah.
No, not working.
Fifty hours.
Let me, I'll do it.
Check, check. Check, check. There it is. Yeah, it's working. Okay. So, yeah, if you're looking at the packet that was handed out, so basically what we ended up doing is breaking out the maintenance building. We tried to simplify it a little more by allocating the choices that we had discussed in a couple of the Buildings and Grounds meetings we had. And essentially gave two particular choices, one being the pre-manufactured building, and then the other being the pole building, which is what we discussed. So I brought a couple other colleagues here just to discuss some of the differences between the two. But if you go through, um, the packet, it goes into the differences of the pole building versus the pre-manufactured building. So that was one of the biggest things that we wanted to discuss, was just the differences between those two and pretty much what you were getting with one or the other. And so through the packet, there's pros and cons of each with the pole building. Essentially, the biggest difference between the two, the pros for the pole building is the lower initial cost, construction speed, the versatility of a, of the typical pole building, ease in modification. And then the cons being probably the biggest thing with just the code compliance being one of the biggest things, energy efficiency, higher maintenance durability, um, and then the limited lifespan. So we've seen the difference with the pole buildings and the steel buildings. Warranty is a big thing to take in consideration as well. So with a pole building, you typically aren't going to have as much of a warranty with a steel building as long, and that would reflect with the durability and the maintenance between those two as well.
And do you want to elaborate a little bit more on the codes?
Yeah, yeah, so Adam, if you wanted to chime in on that a little bit. So Adam Currie's with EI Associates. So he was explaining some of the code compliance issues and this is with the differences between the two.
Yeah, so the trick with, um, the pole barn type building is trying to find an insulation envelope for that type of building. So there's a lot more details and some things you're probably going to have to do to that type of structure to get it with an envelope of being a conditioned building. Um, typically, you see a pole barn that's really a non-conditioned storage building primarily. A pre-engineered metal building is really designed as a package unit, so it has all the insulation that you would need to fully temper that then. So it sounds like this maintenance building is going to be a little bit more towards that condition space, obviously some office spaces in there and so forth, and also just inside the maintenance building for staff to have that to a certain level of temperature. So, I mean, our recommendation would be to consider the pre-engineered metal building, again, due to the warranty of the building itself, and again, just really from a durability standpoint as well. So, um, you know, don't want to go into the weeds and details, but there's just a lot, some things you have to do to that pole barn to really kind of almost customize it to some sense to get it towards what you would get with a pre-engineered metal building.
And essentially with what Adam was saying, by customizing that pole building, you're adding costs to that, which is cutting back on your cost savings from utilizing that pole building. You're going that route. So essentially, it's kind of, um, you know, taking back from the cost savings that you're having by adding those additional things to bring it up to the code compliance that you need for Jackson Township.
When you say cost savings, how much a year would we be looking at for those cost savings?
So when I'm just talking about cost savings, I was just talking about initial cost savings, but from the standpoint of the building itself. So we had it broke out to $132,000 in cost savings between...
Oh, sorry. I was, my question was unclear. I think what Adam was, he was pointing out, or I think, I don't remember which one of you, were talking about the, um, like the improved insulation, that kind of thing, and the possible savings for just overall utility expenses to heat and keep that building warm versus it the same on both.
Well, it would be the same on both. So you would have to, you'd have to provide additional insulation and coverage in the pole building that with the pre-engineered metal building would be included with that package. So essentially, you're bringing more cost in to bring it to that code compliance.
So if we don't provide that insulation, because that, that, those numbers aren't in here, correct? This is...
Yeah, we don't have that broken out.
So if we did not do insulation, what would the difference then be in retaining heat and...
You wouldn't be able to do that, because you'd have to bring it up to code in order to build on a school campus.
So what they're, sorry, what they're saying is, is with a pole building versus a pre-manufactured, the pre-manufactured is set up to be able to take all of the insulation so you can be more energy efficient.
Which I think there's a little miscommunication with. There is insulation in the pole building, it's just not the same.
It's not engineered to be there as part of it. So it's not going to insulate as well. You will still have insulation and it will still work. But we asked this at the Buildings and Grounds. I don't know that we can get an accurate number that's going to say, you're going to save X number of dollars or X percentage on the pole building versus the prefab. So we don't, we asked that question, but I don't know that we can get that, because the pole building is not engineered to have all of the insulation. It's more of a Frankenstein, put it together and make it work, where the pre-engineered is designed to have it all there.
Right, and essentially, the way, what that's doing is covering whatever the code compliances lays out here, which I have. So in that packet, I think I do have some of the codes listed in here.
And then, a quick, another quick, while he's looking that up for Adam, you were talking about the warranty of the difference in warranty. What is that difference in warranty?
So with the pre-engineered, you're going to get a warranty for that total system, right? So they're going to warranty that full building. So that's basically everything from the slab up. So that's the structure, it's all the walls, it's the insulation. Again, it's sort of a total package when you purchase a pre-engineered metal building. So they're going to have a workmanship, plus just, you know, your general warranty on that for the full year. Again, with the pole building, you're pulling in a lot of different, you know, pieces to kind of make that work in a commercial application. So you won't have a total kind of envelope building package with that, with that system. Does that answer? Okay. Is that...
We're thinking like 50 years for the prefab, and then the pole building just varies.
The pole building, you will have to go to each individual component for a warranty, correct? Instead of it all being just lumped into one. Right.
Yeah, I would say so. Which if you go on that packet, on the second to last page, it has the better breakout, just what code compliance issues we were talking about. So there's some that have to do with fire protection, some have to do with loads, um, and then some have to do with construction type and occupancy. It does go over that a little more in detail on some of those designs we were talking about. And we have been, we have been spoken directly with Jackson Township just to see what their recommendations or what their requirements are specifically for Jackson Township, which we could, we can make that determination to see, you know, what that would look like. But right now, like you were saying, it would be difficult to break that out to see exactly what the difference would be between the two based on what their requirements are for that code. Did you have any other questions on the pole building? It would make sense to go through here a little more, just to get a little more understanding of the differences. With the pole building also, just on the first page, it has kind of the typical breakout of a pole building with the pre-engineered wood trusses. And I don't know if you guys want to chime in a little more just on the slab and the concrete details.
Yeah.
Between the two.
They usually don't vary too much differently. For the pole buildings, you're going to have to have a continuous run of footing in lieu of what typically would be on a non-conditioned base. You can just order a hole, put the first in, put your concrete. With the deep conditions, you need to have that thermal break, so you need the insulation down vertically and horizontally, which loses the, basically, cost efficiencies.
And then moving on to just the, more of the breakout of how we have these two separated. So the first and second page, first one being the pre-engineered metal building, and the second, second page being the pole building. So we have it broken out by division, and within each of those divisions, I did include some of the adders and deducts that we had talked about. So if you go down through Division 3, um, basically saying that concrete's including, on this particular price, it includes that, the loading dock. And then on Page 3, it will show what that deduct would be for removing the loading dock. And then through the other divisions, the next one being masonry, we did include the original brick stone facade. And then again, we have that notated on the deducts. Uh, that breakout of having that stone facade removed. So you notice, I don't have, there should be parentheses around those, the loading dock and then the stone facade there. So those are deducts.
So on the third page, when we went through this exercise, we found that there was varying board members that wanted different things. So these things are all broken out individually. So when we vote on this, uh, we will start with the pole building, not prefab, and we will vote on it. Afterwards, we will vote if we want to upgrade the 131,600 to the pre-manufactured building. And then each one of these other things, we will just make a separate vote. So it comes with one bathroom, correct?
Yes.
And then if we want to add the second bathroom and the second shower, that is $24,000, we will do that as a separate vote. And the thought process behind doing it this way was if there's one thing in there that somebody doesn't want, we don't want to try and force everybody into one building. We're going to build the building one vote at a time by going through these individual items. Only other thing that I would like to point out, Mr. Zap, you touched on it earlier. When we vote on this, we are voting on this conceptually. So if we vote on... So if we vote on all of these things on the third page, that means we are voting to sit down with a team of people to help us develop it, determine the true and actual cost, and then we will come back and vote for it again. So if you vote on the bathroom and shower, and we say yes to that, then we come back a second time when we get the actual cost. The reason why we went with Jesse and Lowbar is because in this process, with these types of buildings, you have to go with the lowest bidder. So you have a process where everybody will come in, they will put in a bid, and then from that point forward, historically, at least I will say the supermajority, I'm not going to say all, but the supermajority of places will continually go, well, you have to add this, and now you have to add this, and now you have to add this. Doing it this way, that does not happen. Doing it this way, we have access to what people's starting bids were and what people's ending bids were and where the projects ended up. And we can go and look at tile, we can look at toilets, we can look at lights, we can look at all of the individual components and pick out the cost of the things that we want not to exceed the numbers that we are given. But we are still able to take that and go into other people's projects and figure out how to refine the individual components and further drive the cost down without having to lose functionality in the building. But when we vote, all of these things does not mean that that is what we are getting for a building. It means this is, these are the things that we want the rest of the information on, and we want to finish figuring out the details and what the true cost will be.
Yeah, and that was saying not to exceed, that's one thing to just highlight with this. Essentially, anytime we come up with a conceptual idea that a school district is looking at, we put together these not to exceed numbers, we'll send a Lowbar letterhead proposal, knowing that we're going to be putting this through the Gordian program. And now that price, you are locked in at that price, and from that point, we'll value engineer the project during the design process. So Adam would be part of that with EI Associates. And then during that project, we'll go through the divisions and effectively value engineer each of those divisions. And then by the time that project is finalized, we have like 75% design, we'll know where our number falls, but it would not go over this number, if anything, it would be below that number. So this is just knowing that, yes, this is the not to exceed, and then you can get in there and, you know, add or subtract whatever you need to to meet the school's requirements. So it just makes the process a lot better than if you're coming in there and you get an estimate, and then you're just waiting for those engineer drawings to come through, and then you get that price. This takes that out of it, where you're going to get it during that process. So effectively, we'll be doing this through different percentages of that design process, and it's worked pretty well.
Two questions, just so I know when we get to it, the add-ons, I see the paved parking lot, but is by default, it'll be a stone parking lot? Okay, so when we vote on this, it'll at least be stone? Okay, and is it the same for the road connecting, like there will be a stone parking lot?
Yes.
And we're deciding?
Yeah, yeah, so.
You didn't say anything about stone anywhere for?
Is the pole parking lot? So the way that we laid it out, we had pavement going around the building where the man doors and the garage doors are. So effectively, you have, like conceptual that we currently have, there's a man door on the front roadside, and then it wraps the building pretty much to where the lean-to would be. And then from that lean-to point, it would be stone within there, and then. Well, we had talked about that being blacktop probably to where the maintenance building would be. So you'd have those roads would connect, and then that would, I can't remember, we didn't really decide how many linear feet that is, but from there, that would turn into the maintenance building, and then that would hit your pavement. Then you pretty much have a road around the maintenance building where those doors are, and then the stone lot would be on the outside of that, which would lead down if it's going by the stadium through the pathway to the stadium parking lot. Correct. So essentially, we added ADA parking lots, so if there's overflow, they can park by the maintenance building, and then they'll just come down. Yeah, because then it's stone, correct? Well, I mean. So there won't be, yeah. And I think I did, I wrote in there that it's the site work as well, so I think it says, yeah, so maintenance, stadium, site work, and paving, so yeah. So I misspoke when I said that, would have been. Right. You, right. Right, and that's a good thing to point out, because that's essentially what these prices are saying. This is saying we're doing it now with this project, you're not remobilizing. Sure. That's exactly how we looked at it, yeah, it's a roadway with a pathway, right? Right, right. Yeah, that's pretty much how we wanted to be, a wider roadway with a. Yeah, and we could throw a percentage at that, I would think, to remobilize, you know, and then that way you have something to compare to, correct? Yeah, and if design costs too, there'd be additional design costs. Yeah, you can give a little repeat there.
Yeah, so, yeah, a stone path would not be considered accessible. Yeah. Yeah, and there's specific, you know, slope tolerances at the spaces, and then, yeah, and so forth.
70 to 200, sure.
Yeah. Which you could essentially do just that ADA part, and it would just be a couple of spots for the ADA end by the stone lot. So you could technically do that. Yeah. Yeah, no, absolutely, yeah.
Just.
I just, yeah, I just got. The three bays we're putting for parking vehicles, are they going to be in that building where it's heated and things? Or are they going to be, are we heating that whole building is what I'm asking?
So the way that we conceptually had it set up is you'll have a division within that maintenance building, so the one side would have offices, and then whether or not you have the food storage, dry storage, then the other side would also be a heated space, and then with that being a garage, and you'd have combustible materials and things like that, you also have automatic exhaust, O2 sensor, and stuff like that inside that space. So that would have some sort of heat source, whether that's like radiant heat or propane or electric.
I'm just, do they have to be in a heated space is what I'm asking, is because it's, I mean, if you take like, the lean-to comes to apparently like $20 an hour a square foot, where the building comes to $200 an hour a square foot, we not store them vehicles in a non-heated part or in that lean-to?
So I appreciate the question, and that's one of the things we're going to do when we sit down with the design. It's easier for us to come down in the number of heating units. It's easier for us to, to Mr. Stein's point, for us to say yes to the ADA stuff and yes to the pavement, and then we can sit down and we can work through, is there a desired number of ADA parking spots that we want, that we want to split the building? That's where, when we sit down and do the design process, that all that stuff's going to come out, and we're going to be able to refine that number down.
Yeah, I think the outline of the approach that we were taking at the last Buildings and Grounds meeting was, when I look at the site work, we want to determine if we're going to go with the prefab or the pole building, and are we putting the walk-ins in or are we putting the walk-ins behind the high school? And then once those kind of things are done, now we can get into the engineering of the building itself. How many doors we're putting on, how many walls we're putting in, what we're heating, what we're not heating, and then that menu can continue.
Is our space right now heated?
No, but to Dr. Bradley's question, are spaces heated right now?
Is there a document, because you guys, I know I've had a thousand Buildings and Grounds meetings, is there a document so that I can at least, because some of this stuff, for me, I don't live in this world. So when I see like loading dock with site work, is there some document where I can at least look up and go, this is why that's suggested? Because in my mind, I'm like, I don't even know why you. So that would be locked in, so like if we wouldn't go with, there would be no need to have a dock there. So those are things that I would like to know, because I don't want to vote on something, and you're like, well, that was unnecessary, so is there someplace?
So we can tie that in.
So the process, when we decide what we're going to do the engineering on, then we go through that process, and we do the pros and cons and the analysis, we figure out how much we can drive it down. The loading dock, and I know it was only an example, but if we don't have a loading dock, then we are manually unloading those trailers and willing it in. So the loading dock is really there, to Mr. Ritz's point, if you move the freezer out of the maintenance building and up to the high school, you're adding $307,000, but you now can deduct the $30,000. So when we go through the process, we're going to drive this price downward. And Jesse has made that clear, that there's room in here. Exactly how much room we have to drive it down, that's what we're going to figure out when we go through the individual components to figure it out.
About the, like the additional garage doors and site work per door?
Yeah, so when we get in and look at the space, there were some questions about do we need the garage doors on the front and the back? I'm trying to figure out pulling out three vehicles versus being able to pull through with just the functionality of the space. Again, each one of these things, we're going to start with the most cost-effective component, which is the pole building. And then when we move on, we will vote if we want to upgrade. We can go through each one of these things, pros and cons, and give the explanation of what you're talking about. But getting those accurate numbers is going to come from the engineering process.
Sure, no, no, that, I totally following you on the engineering process. When I, when we come to vote on this, those pros and cons will be provided with us before we actually then, because I understand we're piecemealing it, and I love it. I just want to make sure when it comes down to a, hey, how many additional doors do we need? I want to be educated on to know, like, how many additional doors do I think we actually need at this point? I don't know. And so if those pros and cons are going to be given to us before we actually piecemeal vote at all, that's exactly what I want. I just don't want to show up the night that we're voting on it, seeing pros and cons, just so I have time to process.
Mr. Borshinger, I guess the question then, what is your source? You know, so if I ask, if we survey Bill and his crew and say, is there value in your efficiency? Is there value in how you do your job to having two doors versus you ask me, or me, or you, us, and I don't know? So I guess it's based on your pros and cons on the source, and, you know, I think the feedback we've got, we've received from the crew is about being able to be efficient, to be able to spend time on actual projects rather than other things that are inefficient. But we can get this for you, but the source may be, you know, Bill's team. This project has gone very differently in the last couple of months, as far as getting this stuff broken out, getting real numbers, actually understanding that it's $18,500 per door and having some of those numbers. So if there's pros and cons that people specifically want to see on the stuff, the.
What's our deadline, Ben?
I'm sorry?
We've been talking about this for four years, so what's our deadline? In terms of when do we need to do this? What is our deadline?
There is a deadline.
Well, it will cost more money.
It will cost more money because we will not be able to be functional. Some of these things are tied together as, like the conversation about ADA, you're going to have a hard time going, you can't go ADA on stone, so you're at least going to have a partial lot. So there's $90,000 that I believe we owe it to ourselves to at least get the information, see what that true cost is, and have some options that would look at the entire thing, how many parking spots? If people wanted 20 parking spots, can we do that with partially paving and partial stone? But we're going to have to go through the process to be able to do that. The additional garage doors are all about the efficiency of our people. I don't think there's a safety or a functional component, but there is a tipping point when you are just spending more money on man-hours instead of garage doors, where that, the same thing with the bathroom. One bathroom versus two bathrooms and a shower, I don't think we want kids spraying, or kids in classrooms where somebody just got done spraying pesticides and goes in. The loading dock, Mr. Ritz already pointed out, we're either adding $307,000 because we're moving it to the high school, and then we don't need the 30, or we could, it would be less of a pain without the 30. But if you're still going to have the dry supplies and other stuff that are going to come, there's still a functional use for the loading dock. So it's just about the functionality and the versatility. We could do it without some of these things, but it's going to be redirecting the cost from the building to labor. And there's a breaking point where it's going to end up costing you more money. Anybody else got any questions?
And that was pretty much the perimeter of the building, but yeah, to your point, if it was metal siding, you know, versus having that stone, I mean, yeah, you're not going to get dent in stone. Sure. Right. Right. Yeah, it's not just cosmetic, to your point, yeah. Right. Yeah, I would say so, yeah. Durability, yeah, for sure. And I mean, it's, obviously, you look at the adder, it's an expensive adder, because those are individually placed, you know, masonry blocks around the building. You know, it essentially comes out to like $60 a square foot for that block. But yeah, it's definitely a little more than cosmetic for the durability of the building.
Mr. Chairperson, if I could just have a point of order. Mrs. Wilson asked about deadlines or timeframes. You know, the only urgency I urge the board to keep the faith with this project is right now, our maintenance department is quote-unquote homeless. They have vacated their space at the Rothschild Church Road property, they're in the process of vacating their space at the Rothschild Church Road property because the interior demolition of that building is taking place. And Mr. Styles, if you want to add anything to that, so right now, we are piecemealing together where they have things, where they're operating out of. It's very inefficient, we're just early in that process. But the only urgency would be to solve that. The second point of order, and Bill, I'll give you the mic to talk about what you guys are doing right now, is, you know, where this money is coming from. So if I was a community member, and if I was listening at home, and I said, wait, you're talking about educational components from 7 o'clock until 10:32, you You talked about teaching positions and you talked about, you know, PE and you talked about music and, and these other things, and now you're talking about a building. We cannot take the money that was from the bond refinance and spend it on staffing. I just want that to be transparent and crystal clear that that cannot happen because the way the bond was refinanced and the way that money was earmarked. Um, so there's no confusion over that. The other point of transparency that we would like to make, or I would like to make, is exploration of other facilities on campus. So, um, there has been conversations of these ESC building being made into a maintenance building. We did not ask the board to look at that. Uh, however, if you have been in the ESC in your life, I, I'm not sure what type of analysis would need to take place to realize that that is not a acceptable solution. There, there has been conversations about room underneath the high school. That room, uh, you know, we have looked at and there is storage there. There's absolutely storage there. Um, it is, it is not busting at the seams, but there are items stored there. They would have to be able to find a home and, um, you cannot bring in engines and things into that building because of code. Um, so other options on campus have been explored and the time to, uh, you know, address this is now and to give those workers somewhere where they can be efficient and they can then help the, the district and we can move on to all their educational components, I think is there. So the urgency is, we are homeless right now with that group. And Bill, I don't know if you, and I applaud your guys because they are working and, and today out at Paradise, I see people cutting grass, I see buildings being cleaned and, and they're, they're, they're putting it together and making it happen. So thank you to your staff.
So, so the, the, uh, the sequence of events is the, the agreement that you passed, um, 45 minutes ago, um, whenever that's signed and that gets passed back to the YMCA because they need to sign it yet, whether their board has to approve it or if it's a single signature, um, then that'll go to Jackson Township. Jackson Township will notify the, the contractor, um, that everything's ready to go, you can pick your permit up. And then whenever that happens, um, the contractor has told us, we, uh, that they'll mobilize their demo crew within two weeks to start the process of demoing. So right, right now we are within two weeks and one day as a possibility of, of, of them coming in and starting the demo. Uh, right now, presently, we have everything out of the building, um, from the, um, from the two parking, uh, where the garage doors are back. We just need to concentrate on, on what we have in our, in our bays, poles and supplies. So we're utilizing three large areas in the basement of the high school. We're utilizing all the space that we can underneath the stadium. Um, technology has given us, uh, space that we can lay down 82 feet of our shelves that we have supplies on. So that's going to help us out tremendously. And our staff is, uh, right now relocated in the old copying center, um, in technology. And we have the, uh, uh, the weather to our advantage, um, for a few months here. Um, once the permits picked up, the contractor has 243 days, so we can start counting backwards when we don't have use of our walk-ins anymore. And at that point, we're going to be looking at, um, a freezer trailer, a refrigerator trailer, a dry goods trailer and possibly, um, moving out of that area for renovations. Where, where the guys are, we have an office trailer for our staff, um, located some, somewhere between technology and the intermediate school. So that's, that's our, that's our plans right now. Uh, we have water access to, to, to wash vehicles and things out on the outside of, uh, of the basement of the high school. Um, when it comes to this winter, when we have to deal with the elements, um, contact Christ and see if we can borrow their wash bay to, to wash things down. But other than that, everything's going to be outside.
Thank you all very much for this project, working with us. All right, any, we are moving on, um, policy with Mrs. Baum.
Mark, I'm going to turn this over to you about the PSBA delegate assembly.
Thank you, Ms. Baum. So you do have the memo in front of you, uh, it contains the details surrounding, uh, the school board's opportunity to appoint two voting delegates to represent Spring Grove at the annual assembly. If you are interested in it, please let Suzanne or myself know prior to, uh, June 23rd. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Personnel with Mr. Stein. Moving on to curriculum with Mr. Barshinger.
All right, I'm going to toss this over to Dr. Guadino.
Thank you. Um, you have a rather lengthy memo, um, that represents a lot of work by a lot of staff members. Um, we tried to organize it for you. Um, all of the, uh, courses are hyper-length so that you can, uh, review that, uh, that curriculum at your leisure. Um, you see it's organized into new course proposals. Those would be classes that don't currently exist unless it says revised next to it, which means it's exists in some fashion, but they're revising it. Um, you see that goes through a variety of departments, business, ELA, FCS, math, music, science, social studies, STEM and wellness and fitness. And then you have a list of what's listed as revised courses and curriculum cycle. And as you know, we rewrite, uh, curriculum on a, a cycle. Um, and you'll see the, uh, subjects that were up for revision are family consumer science, counseling, social studies and music. Um, each of those courses or each of those subjects that are listed in that curriculum cycle list, that's a list, a, a hyperlink to a folder that opens up more courses. In total, there are 100 courses listed in, in this memo. Um, we're giving it to you now, so you have time to review it. If you have questions, uh, we'd be happy to answer them. On May 5th, um, we'll be revisiting this, so you have some time. Uh, we will have, um, administrators and some, and others around on that day to answer any questions you might have if you, uh, have them. We will not look to, uh, vote on this until May 19th. Okay, so again, we have a, a, a long list of, of courses, 100 of them. Um, some are brand, brand new and then others are just revisions. And then there's the third part, which is our curriculum cycle courses. And I can answer any questions right now if you have any.
I'm not going to lengthen this meeting. When you said, but you said, May 5th, we'll have another opportunity.
May 5th, we, uh, director study on May 5th, we'll have, um, administrators here who helped work on these. If you have questions, they might, if I can't answer them, they can. If you have questions before that though, we, we can prepare.
Under courses, are there like, like reds or things that show where the changes are? Or you have to, you can't tell the changes are?
Yeah, they're, they're, they've all been, no, we don't. I know what you're asking for, but no. They've all been, well, some of them are brand, brand new, so the, uh, that doesn't exist. Yeah. No, it's, it's way, it's way more, it's way more extensive than that. Um, and I wish we could do that, but we did not. It's, sorry. I know. I know.
Well, yeah, my question, some, all these new ones, do they take new staff, new people?
No, no. These, the, the ones that are listed as new course proposals, those are the course proposals that you approved in the, in the fall as when we came to and said, we want to provide these courses. They're, they're, in most cases, they're at the high school, almost all of them, they're going to either replace something that's already there or it's, it's like a new program. Like we have some, uh, some ag stuff listed there and we have, um, some business stuff that's kind of there to, to replace some of the things that we already do. Uh, the next thing is a draft, uh, agreement, um, with Keystone Red Rocks Job Corps. Uh, this, uh, agreement would allow us, or allow students who, uh, wanted to go there to, um, participate in their program. We would approve their, their program and they would, uh, essentially be able to graduate, uh, from us with their, with their help and our permission. Does not cost us anything, doesn't cost the students anything. Um, but in order for us to have it, this in place, we need to have this agreement. And, um, essentially we agree to work with them to get a very small specialized group of students who might need this help, uh, graduated and help. Questions there? And the last agreement is a, uh, one more affiliation agreement, uh, Moreland University, uh, it's asking to agree for us to take their student teachers if we have a student teachers that want to work with our students and our teachers. Dr. Lovelace, you're up.
Hello, um, for your, for reason you have an agreement, um, it says New Story, but I don't know if you know that River Rock and New Story are owned by the same company. So it's a new proposal. And what the proposal is, is that we would contract with New Story, River Rock to run our own therapeutic emotional support classroom. Included in the contract in front of you are several staff, two behavior managers, one special education teacher, one social worker or school counselor that would just be with that classroom. And I did, I played hardball and I got, I think a quarter of a day of a BCBA to help with the behavior plans. So that staff would be run lot would be not our staff, it would be the staff of River Rock slash New Story. The students that would be in that class would be our students. Um, if we couldn't, if we couldn't use all the seats, which we can at this time, um, they could sell those seats, um, and that means our costs would be less. So right now, you saw some of the figures from my previous report. So probably right now our most expensive student, um, that attends a therapeutic emotional support class attends the emotional support class at New Story in Lancaster. So we pay about 60 plus thousand dollars for the tuition and then we also paid, we also paid to transport that student to Lancaster. So we believe we can do as good as or a better job in our partnership with River Rock New Story and we can have our students be in our building under our control, um, with input from us, allowing them opportunities to access curriculum in a different way or make transitions to a less restrictive placement. We could lower our costs for transportation and, um, any kind of substitutes or anything like that would be provided by River Rock, um, New Story if those staff are out. So that's a little bit about the contract that you have before you.
Dr. Lovelace, one, one quick question, please.
Yes.
Um, and with Dr. Dietrich and Mr. Lannan, have you, uh, explored potential sites on campus?
Classroom, you mean? Yes, sir, we have. And that would be, um, currently where, very close to where the current, um, we allow, we allow the IU to have therapeutic emotional support class run through the IU. And so we'll be very close to that same classroom, but close to a door where kids can come in and out very easily, um, have access in and out. Um, and I think, we think that will be a really good match and fit with additional space for counseling services as needed for those students. Yes, sir.
Jit, I'm going to piggyback on that question.
Yes, sir.
I was going to ask that question.
Yes.
So what, what is the impact on the high school with, like, are we taking a classroom from someone? Is this preventing us from, like, I know with the elementary schools, we.
Yeah.
Losing classes when we needed classes and so.
What this did was we did, um, so try to explain this. We, with the IU, the number of students that we have in the IU system, we have to reciprocate by providing space in our buildings for their classrooms. So we've always been a, we've always provided more space than required. Um, last year we had two test classes, but I asked that we just have one. And then, um, I think you guys know, we have the deaf, hard of hearing, um, strand of classes from grades five through 12 that are from our intermediate school to the high school and that fulfills our requirement as well. So we, we didn't really need to have that extra class of test there. So when we look at the students that we have, um, the continuum of services we provide in special education, the test class would be something that's above an emotional support class, provide additional support in a smaller group setting. Maximum of 12 students full-time would be in that class. So what we would do is we would look at, we have students kind of out in the wind, a lot of different places. We would look to bring those students back to our building, not pay those tuitions out if possible and have those students educated in our building.
But the space that they're going to be in.
Thank you. Is already our classroom. That's used by the IU that we're just going to give to these, to this classroom.
Can we, before our, before the next.
Thank you, Steve, for translating.
Yeah. Before the next meeting, can you get the cost savings?
We, we believe that it will come out to be maybe the same or less. We, we think at this time, we can fill every seat right now with a student, we, we believe. Now, there's some meetings that have to be had here at the end of the year, end of the year meetings, but we believe right now proposed, our proposed roster, that we could fill all 12 seats without having them go out and we could have students come back from those outside placements back to this test class. Yes, Mr. Stein? Yes, sir. Yes, sir, all high school kids. There's, yeah, there's some, um, districts that do have like a middle school test class and they even have, believe it or not, elementary test classes in different districts, but we're not proposing that at this time, just a high school class. You're welcome. Any other questions? If I can get you those numbers as soon as I can, I will. Thank you, sir.
The next is for planning items. And again, I will reiterate what I said earlier tonight. Um, I would really like the, uh, district to organize, um, the evolution of our diversity statement into something like the Rocket Promise. Um, I put that in your laps, um, and to report back sooner than later. Um, but that is all I had for planning. Anybody else?
Yeah, I, I would like to see, I understand we have the, the means to take live streaming and keep it, that someone can look at that anytime they felt like it. Can, what would that take to make that happen? That some of these rumors and stuff that they could, people call us out, we could, we could do that?
We would have to update policy.
Okay.
There's a policy for it. Suzanne, do you off? 005, thank you, Suzanne. Yeah. So you can talk to your policy chair and, um, figure that out.
Yeah, and the other thing I'd like, uh, I know Dr. Bradley is a big, uh, big supporter of, of people going out and talking or representatives about this curriculum or about the, the cyber schools. Would it be beneficial to us to reach out to our solicitor and ask our solicitor to solicit other school districts and join as a, a group of schools to advocate for that?
So, um, your membership in two organizations already do that, so your membership, if not three. So your membership in, um, PSBA, thank you, uh, is a huge advocate for this. Learn the information, we called for our new website, which will be live soon. Um, and I encourage, once again, I encourage the public to access our website and we'll get information about cyber school advocacy for change. And then your membership into the Pennsylvania Association of Rural and Small Schools, PARS, is a big advocate for cyber school funding change. And then PASB, I believe, is also a big advocate in those alphabet letter, uh, organizations work, uh, quite well in our favor, but it also is nothing like a, uh, elected official hearing from their constituents. When you hear from your constituents and, and their concern that at their next election is when it really is impactful, the stories are impactful. So thank you, thank you, Rodney.
Anything else? All right, motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor, meeting adjourned. Thank you.